Okay, all right. This is a work session, so our procedure is a little more informal than with a regular business meeting. Though with this many people, it could get warm in here, so we'll try to move as quickly as possible. We don't make decisions per se at these meetings. We don't make binding decisions. We can give instruction to staff, and that's an important element, but we generally don't make conclusive, major binding decisions. But this is an opportunity for discussion and to exchange ideas. So before we jump into the four items on our agenda, and it's a little hard to get to it, but there is a copy of the agenda on the back, but the first item up is the rec center. And then the second item is local governing authority appointments to our Board of Health, and then some other internal things for item three. Before we get started on that, though, we have an opportunity for public comment on anything, but if you're here on the rec center, I'd ask that you wait until we get to that item. We will have a presentation by staff and an outside consultant. Things will make more sense. We'll then have an opportunity for public comment after that presentation. If you're here for one of the other items, we'll also have an opportunity for public comment after each of those items as well. If you really have to get out of here, though, this is an opportunity for public comment. We just ask that you keep it brief. We'll open it up for public comment again on any item, on the agenda or not. Ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Tell us your name and address. Given the number of people here, we'll have to have a discussion when we get to the rec center about counsel whether you really want to hear three minutes from everybody, or whether we want to shorten that in time, or maybe take a half an hour at three minutes and ask you amongst yourselves to, if you've got designated representatives, to have them go forward. If you just want to register that you're in favor, give us your name, address, say I'm in favor, or I'm against, or very short. Otherwise, we could be here all night, and that, nobody really wants to do that, right? So with that, we'll open it up, though, for public comment on any items. Again, please wait if your items can be heard later, if that's possible. Just ask your name and address.
Amber Dunn, Dorothy Lane. So I was informed that I should let you guys know, I know we come here every week and talk about the same problems, but I was told that I should let you guys know about something that I personally have had to deal with due to what we go through next door. So we always talk about mental health up here, and how that's a problem in the city of Billings. I actually have to go to counseling every single week due to what I go through next door, and what I live through. I've had to learn anchoring mechanisms, coping mechanisms, mechanisms just to get me through the day without being stressed out and worried of what's going on next door. Just so you guys know, he was locked up until yesterday, but Saturday night, Sunday morning, two females were getting into an altercation outside of the house in the middle of the night, 1:40 in the morning. So the problem still occurs even when the drug dealer is in jail. Since he's been out, it has been Grand Central Station next to my house. Nothing is happening. And I get that the mayor sent an email that said this is a county issue, but I'm going to say this once again. We elected every one of you guys to be our voice, especially the mayor. So be our voice, go to the county, talk to the people you need to talk to, and get the situation under control, because what's being done is not working. We got information that shows us when his court hearings will be. Well, let's see, they were supposed to be in October, then November, then January, now April and May. So we have to live through this for four more months, and you want to talk about mental health issues? You're putting them on us, all three of us, all five of them that live next door to us. You're causing us mental health issues because you're not speaking for us. You're not doing what we elected you to do and be our voice. I'm tired of living next to drug dealers and homeless people that come in and out that we have no clue who they are. What if my child is outside what she wouldn't be because she refuses to go outside? But what if she was, and one of these individuals came up and approached her? What are we doing to protect these children? There's thousands, I mean hundreds of them here tonight. What are we doing to protect them? The six-year-old girl that St. John said he spoke to her mother, she's been there every day. She spent the night last night. So I don't know if you know, but meth residue is 33% after every hit that they take that lands in that home. That she's just uproaring in the air every time she's in there, playing on the floor as children do, sitting on the couch as children do, and she's being exposed to this, and nothing's being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jacqueline Garcia, Dorothy Lane. I'm gonna keep it really short. It'd be nice to see all these people come out and lend their ear and tell you guys how they feel about crime, about the drug problems that we have. We have a huge turnout for a rec center, which is awesome. Do I like the idea? No, $113 million, and it's not going to see positive revenue income for a long time. I've watched those slides before. But it would be really nice to see people care this much also about the community that our children are growing up in. The fact that our children are walking down the street, and there's these druggies hanging out on the bike paths, there's the homeless people living in the bushes by two moons. We're not safe. Everyone knows we're not safe. Everyone knows crime's getting worse. It'd be beautiful to see a turnout for the positive of changing billings, not just a rec center.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy, please don't start my time yet. I've got something else to hand out. That's okay, Mayor?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Wesley Dunn, Dorothy Lane. So that's my card, 73 times. I don't know if any of y'all have watched that interview with St. John and him talking about that incident where police had to ask a criminal 73 times to stop doing what they were doing. So anyways, getting to my point. You have my card here. I've been coming up here saying, nobody is answering questions. Citizens are emailing y'all left and right. Nobody is answering our questions. I've asked questions. Pam, thank you very much for you doing what you're doing. Why aren't y'all answering these questions? Why can't you be accountable and answer them? My wife even said, that's why we elected you. We elected you to be our voice, to find out why, when we have an issue, why? So Republican Representative Strom Wold resigned. St. Law Market from Billings has announced her resignation citing the challenges of serving and strain on her mental health. Y'all want to keep pumping drugs into mental health facilities and all this money? Anyways, this is where the mental health is. This is her quote, "The people I've met along this journey taught me so much, and I've developed many friendships I'll keep with me throughout my life." That's great for that young lady. She was one of Montana's youngest lawmakers, 19, when elected to her first term in 2020. In her letter, she said she was proud to bring a different perspective to legislative debates as a young female college student. However, she also cited the challenge of affording to be a student and a legislator at the same time, keeping two homes and traveling between them. In addition, she said she had faced significant backlash from members of my caucus because I did not fall in line. That's talking about bullying. That's exactly what she's saying. She was bullied to change who she was. She said, no, not gonna do that. I am who I am. It is clear that I cannot serve House District 50 the way I want to while protecting my mental health. This is where our mental health is, not crackheads. That's not a mental health issue. Legislative systems need to adapt so that more young people, students, single parents, and those living on low incomes can serve. It is also critical that representatives focus more on policy solutions and less on party decisiveness. That means put your heads together, talk about it. Let's do something instead of just having important conversations. And it's taken six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
All right. I haven't lived here for about 10 years, back when we had a Greyhound, but now that I'm back, I am disgusted. It's ridiculous.
And sir, just your name and address.
Hold on a second, because I can fix your homeless problem. All right, my name is Dale Parkin, and I live here in Billings now. I would like to open a nightclub as well, where people can dance all night, but you go drink somewhere else. Anyway, we'll get to that another time. But first, I'd like to see the parking lot behind the art museum. There's broken glass everywhere. I'd like to see that all cleaned up. The municipal park right across the street, that looks like garbage. Nobody even dumps the garbage over there. Like, what's going on? And the planter there needs new plants and things. Looks really bad. So new jobs. All right. I've got a whole list of jobs that apparently, I've been all over America, and you guys don't have these jobs. Like, what's up with that? One of them is cleaning up trash. You can hire the homeless to do that, and eventually, they won't be homeless. Let's see, I got plans to take care of the crazies. Rather than calling the police, you can call these guys. And I'd like to see some 24-hour restaurants again. Where do we get diapers at 4:00 in the morning? What if the ones at the gas station don't work? Let me make sure that was everything. Oh, and if you doubt my work ethic, I work typically 15 to 20, 25 hours a day, even if I'm just dancing. And I'll sleep for two hours, and I wake up feeling great. I don't do drugs, not even marijuana. I smoke cigars, though. I like my nicotine. But I don't drink. I work out. And I want to get America dancing again, because I don't see anyone dancing. I'm wandering around with my speaker, hardly anyone dances. I'll dance with the trees, because at least they'll dance with me. And I'm serious about these jobs. There's a lot. Hire me.
Okay, thank you. Next. Is there anybody else before we move on to item number one? Nobody's moving forward?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item number one, then, the multi-generational rec center. We have a presentation from staff, so Chris, I'm gonna let you introduce our staff presenter.
Corey's gonna kick things off. I asked him just to take a few minutes to remind us, those of us who don't have young children in the rec programming, it's pretty amazing what Corey and his team and his staff do. So the purpose here is just to give some background information to how we use, mostly not our facilities, school district facilities, to provide recreational, productive, planned activities for kids. So I'm gonna turn over to Corey. After Corey presents, we'll get into the multi-generational rec center with Dusty and the consultant, and then Mayor, from there, however you want to handle the meeting. So Corey, would you go ahead and kind of kick things off?
Yeah, thank you, Chris, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We appreciate the opportunity to show you all the great work that our staff's doing for our community. And I'd first like to just briefly introduce those folks that are doing all the hard work. Brad Knudsen, he's a rec specialist. He's been with us for about six years. Chris Martin, another one of our recreation specialists. Chris's been with us for four years. Dan McKinney, one of our recreation specialists. Dan's been with us for three years. Jennifer Brown, she's our recreation wellness specialist. She's been with us for four years. And new to our team is Kaylee Beaman. She's our recreation wellness support staff. This is her first year with us. It's also important to mention the over 200 seasonal and temporary employees that our staff trains and supervises throughout the course of the year. They're really the key to us making these programs and facilities happen. So how does a rec center take recreation to the next level in our community? Year-round safe spaces for both children and adults will help to reduce crime and provide healthy outlets for all those involved. Our youth and senior scholarship makes programs and facilities affordable regardless of folks' ability to pay. So a rec center, no doubt, will be a focal point for recreation in our community. But I think, as you will see throughout our presentation, it's also important to continue to offer programs throughout our entire community, which we do through schools, pools, and other facilities in our parks. As I kind of touched on, we're essentially a mobile recreation division. Utilization of our public middle schools, all six of them, providing programming at our swimming pools. We have fantastic city parks, acres and acres of space to provide programs for kids and families, and our community and senior center, where we focus on wellness programs for senior adults. Again, providing these programs and access to these programs throughout our entire community makes them accessible to all children and families in town. Our partnership with School District Number Two, again, provides us access to essentially six middle school gymnasiums and a couple elementary schools. We have a fantastic relationship with School District Two. We provide a feeder program for middle school activities through our programs for third through fifth grades, boys and girls, and basketball and volleyball. We have over 80 teams in our adult sports leagues that utilize the middle schools in the evenings. But as you can see, our availability is limited to evenings. After School District Two activities and programs are completed, we also grab onto some Sunday afternoons because there's space to do that. What that also does, it really limits our ability to expand our existing programs and develop new programs. Again, we are able to sustain our programming that we've had for years and years, but our ability to be creative and provide new program opportunities for our community is very limited. Our swimming pools and aquatic operations, we specialize in aquatic operations. We already operate a 50-meter pool at Rose Pool, at Rose Park. It's used for swim team practices in the morning. We provide adult aquatic exercise in the evenings. We have over 100 kids each week in our Learn to Swim program through the American Red Cross. And again, we're also able to utilize that pool to provide 10 weeks of aquatic day camps, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Kids do scuba diving and snorkeling and different activities in the pool. I think it's important to highlight that we have certified aquatic facility operators on staff, and we're able to certify lifeguards and swim instructors in-house with our staff. We take a lot of pride in providing safe and enjoyable aquatic facilities for our community, even though they're only open about 11 weeks a year. Our city park programming, I kind of mentioned that we're blessed to have the amount of park space and the type of park amenities we have available to us. We do try to utilize all resources available to us, and our summer day camps are very popular in our community. You've seen that throughout the last few years especially. And it's vital that we have access to an indoor facility to use as a base camp for safety or weather-related emergencies. We continue to see our tennis and pickleball instruction grow at both the youth and adult levels. We specialize in some specialty camps that are kind of outside the norm in terms of our adventure camps or playhouse camps. And one I'd really like to highlight is our Miracle League that we started this fall. Our staff committed a tremendous amount of time, effort, research, and communication in to be able to pull off a Miracle League this fall, and we're real excited about our upcoming spring season. Again, I kind of mentioned our youth and adult programming, and again, making this accessible to all in our community. We offer NFL, flag football, excuse me, in seven different parks throughout our community. I might need a drink of water here. A little toasty. Our senior and adult wellness programming, we offer a wide range of programs and activities from arts and crafts, exercise classes, nutrition. We've seen a 33 or 35% increase in our participation for our wellness programming. A lot of that is due to our formal partnership that we have with the Adult Resource Alliance. They've opened up their facilities on the West End and the Heights to allow us to provide our programming for senior adults, and those programs continue to grow. Our front desk and customer service operation, we have systems in place currently that we utilize to provide programming and facilities in town. They're in place, like our online and in-person activity registration, 72% of which is online. Our staff uses sport scheduling and tournament software to make those schedules accessible to our participants. We utilize our point-of-sale system at Rose Pool for both our admissions and concession operation. We have a pass management system that we utilize for our season passes, utilizing a barcode scanner. We schedule over 140 park permits and events annually in our parks through our facility reservation software. We kind of pull it all together with our new mobile app that has all of our programs, schedules, and updates together in one convenient location. So how can a recreation division operate a new rec center? Essentially, if you combine all the programs and services that we're currently providing into one central location, we're essentially already operating a recreation center. But the beauty of that is we will continue to provide programming in the schools, in the parks, and at the pools, which essentially gives Billings the best of both worlds. We can be in the neighborhoods, and we'll have a focal point for recreation at the new rec center. Our staff is knowledgeable and excited, as well as completely invested in providing programs and services to our community. We have activity programs, specialists onboard. We specialize in aquatic operations. We already run sports leagues and tournaments. We have health and wellness specialists. We have a front desk and customer service, the systems in place to do that, and we already have a youth and senior scholarship program. Along with that, you have the operational infrastructure already in place with our IT department, our finance department, our human resource department, our legal department. And one of the beauties of being in the park and rec department is we have access to our park maintenance staff and Mike Pig with the knowledge, the equipment, and the experience to quickly be able to help us out should we have any maintenance issue arise. So with that, I would close by saying the benefits are endless. The recreation division delivers and specializes in quality programs and activities that are safe, accessible to all, affordable, and help to reduce crime. I would answer any questions you may have.
We'll have an opportunity to bring Corey up or ask more specific questions later, so counsel, I guess I'm assuming, let's get into the rest of the presentation. All right, Mayor and Counsel, good evening. I'm Dusty Eaton, CEO of A&E Design, and I'm leading this process along with our consultants for the recreation center. On the Zoom, we have Kevin Armstrong with BRS and Jeff King with Ballard &amp; King, who you've had the opportunity to meet and speak with through this evolution and through the last presentations. So this evening, we are giving an update on the design. And so the last time I was here was in late fall, in October of last year, and we presented what was nearly the final evolution of the master plan. And after that meeting, we had a few additional iterations that were the result of some outside forces changing a few programmatic needs that we felt between the core team, the executive team, and our consulting team felt that they were good updates to the rec center design. And so what you're going to see tonight is the recommendation from the core team for the final recreation center. So it's a, I'm gonna do an abbreviated presentation. We have, you've seen so much of this in the past, it is that it's not worth continuing to repeat the same information. You've seen the history of this, why we're here, what those iterations have looked like. So I'm gonna really summarize the front end and then jump right to the final design, the capital, and the operational costs. And then Kevin and Jeff are on the Zoom, both have a hard stop around 6:30. So we'll jump into this and then open it up for questions. So just as a reminder, the goal through this process was to create a multi-generational indoor recreation center that reflects the needs of the Billings residents while also building our tourism economy through amateur sporting event recruitment. Again, I know I've hit this, but it's important to state that the core team felt that it's essential that we balance the needs, both of local residents, think about local youth basketball, ice time, volleyball, all these critical programs, balanced with the ability to be a regional attraction for sports tourism, really unlike anything else in the state. So when we reached out to the community through surveys and workshops, public meetings, we've continued to get consistent feedback, both through the master plan in 2018, 19, that matches the feedback we've received over this last year, which the top priorities continue to rise to the top, their unmet needs within the community. And that focuses on the top few there, swimming, both leisure and competitive, gym and court sports, indoor track for running, walking, jogging, indoor group and exercise studio space, ice, indoor ice skating rink, and then also multi-generational flexible space, senior activity-type space. So jumping right into the first level of the floor plan, the primary shift that you will see here from the last time that we were here is a second sheet of ice. So when we were here in the fall, the need for two sheets of ice was always discussed among the core team, and there was a bit of a tangential effort to explore a second sheet of ice in the sportsplex, which was seen to be an economical way to get a second sheet of ice near this facility. It would fit within that, and right after the presentation, as our core team reconvened to discuss that, that facility was under contract with another group, and therefore, that option was off the table. So the core team met with the executive team several times to focus on, this is a priority, two sheets of ice is really important for the community, the need is there, and it was recommended to put that second sheet of ice into this facility when that other facility was no longer available. So with that, just a quick recap on the orientation. So we have two, the design of the facility is built on these two primary axes, running north-south and east-west. The lower-left quadrant here of the facility is aquatics. We do have an indoor 50-meter competition pool. This will be the only indoor 50-meter pool in the state of Montana. That's a big deal from sports tourism and attraction standpoint. And then we also have a separate leisure Learn to Swim kids pool area. You can see in the dark blue there, the slides, this is, as I've shown in the past, the images of spaces that are really designed for youth programming. Adjacent to that, for example, is a pool party room. In the middle here is support space for aquatics, locker rooms, and then the red is courts. So we have times to focus on, this is a priority, two sheets of ice is really important for the community, the need is there, and it was recommended to put that second sheet of ice into this facility when that other facility was no longer available. So with that, just a quick recap on the, the orientation. So we have two, the, the design of the facility is built on these two primary axes running north-south and east-west. The lower-left quadrant here of the facility is aquatics. The, we do have an indoor fifty-meter competition pool. This will be the only indoor fifty-meter pool in the state of Montana. That's a big deal from sports tourism and attraction standpoint. And then we also have a separate leisure learn-to-swim kids pool area. You can see in the dark blue there, the slides, this is, as I've shown in the past, the images of spaces that are really designed for youth programming. Adjacent to that, for example, is a pool party room. In the middle here is support space for aquatics locker rooms. And then the red is courts. So we have four running in this orientation, we have four competition, like high school competition basketball courts. Running across that, we're able to get eight youth basketball or eight volleyball courts in that same space, simply by oversizing that gym area. And then the other main area up here to the right is, of course, the double sheets of ice along with the support space for team rooms, locker rooms, and all supporting ice area. Down here, we have some multi-generational kind of flexible space. That's the space for any type of activity to occur, adjustable rooms that can flex. And then in the middle, admin, we have concessions to support the facility, family gathering areas, clip and climb for youth. Think about the ability to be at the facility like this for a basketball tournament. You might have a twelve-year-old in the, playing basketball, and a five-year-old that can use this clip and climb. It's really truly a multi-generational facility. Jumping to the second floor, we have open fitness area here and the walk-jog track, along with some additional administration and support space. Both the fitness and the walk-jog track are looking down to below into aquatics and the gym space. So looking at how the larger facility fits onto the site, you can see here that it still borders on the north and west edge, Amen Park. Again, really working to leverage that opportunity for indoor/outdoor recreation. This would be the only amenity, the only facility like this in the region where we have this kind of outdoor complex immediately adjacent to the indoor facility. Again, access, parking, and when you look at the floor plan here is how it sits, taking advantage of the, really not having a front door to the facility. All sides are equally important because Amen Park borders both the north and the west boundaries. And a quick glimpse at the architecture. Again, this has really remained unchanged from the last time you saw it. Little bit of update, but important to the core team was really creating a facility that reflects Billings in a high-quality way, but we can find economical ways to build these very large, tall, high-volume facilities. They're big buildings, and we need to create good human scale, comfortable spaces, and thinking about the fact that somebody may arrive at a facility like this, and it might be their first entry into Billings, right? They may arrive here and they've never been to Billings. They're going to arrive for, say, a swim meet, and this needs to be a welcoming place. This needs to be that gateway into Billings, and that we think about it that way from what you, how your arrival is, and then how we use this facility to launch people into our community that are going to spend dollars eating and staying for an extended weekend, for example. Here we are in the parking lot, looking back to the west toward the entry of the facility, the hockey space, the hockey rinks or ice rinks, excuse me, here on the right. Now we're on Amen Park side on the north, looking back. So we have a north entry here. Now we're standing out in the soccer fields, looking back to the east. This is the gym space on the left, and aquatics on the right. So the project cost, the total project cost is a hundred and twelve million, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. That has been updated since the last time you met, when we increased with the second sheet of ice and the corresponding site, additional site work to support that and support space within the facility. So effectively, we redesigned half of the building to make sure that this really is built as the ideal facility for Billings. Operations, Jeff King is on the line, is our operations consultant. This is what they do, is build performa models for cost recovery. And these numbers have been updated here showing a range. Jeff can dig into the specifics for anybody who's interested. There, there is a range at this point, just based on assumptions that are made. And I would extend an invite to anybody interested. Councilmember Owen had requested a meeting to ask questions about some of the nuances within the financial assumptions, and that meeting is tomorrow morning at nine AM, just via WebEx. So if anybody else would like to join that more than welcome to, just a Q and A session for the financial modeling. So we can, you know, any specific questions for, for Jeff can either be asked tonight or saved for that meeting. But there's a lot of assumptions that go into a model like this. What I would say, and Jeff can speak further too, is the cost recovery of this range, over seventy percent, is considerably higher than your average rec center around the region. And oftentimes Ballard King would, would say that their assumptions at this stage are very conservative in that they beat those projections. Okay, record time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dusty. Anything else from Jeff or Kevin before we move into questions from counsel?
Jeff or Kevin, anything I missed?
No, I think you covered it all, Dusty, so thank you very much.
Okay. Chris, anything else before we turn it over to counsel?
Only piece I would add is just so you would know potentially what next step is. Obviously, it's a stated word of work session, no action taken tonight. I tentatively have it on your February thirteenth council agenda to make a decision about adopting the plan. So that is potent, that's the, a logical next primary step based on the direction you give us tonight. So thank you, mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chris. If you don't have anything else, Dusty, then we're going to go to some council questions. Counsel, Jeff and Kevin have that six-thirty stop, so if you have something in their expertise, we'll want to make sure to get questions to them first. Just so that we make sure that everybody has an opportunity, we'll start down Ward One if we can. Or actually, well, we'll start, we'll start with me. And we'll, we'll go this way, that way. That'll, that'll save, give Councilmember Rasha a minute. One important thing, and Dusty, this is almost more of a Chris Kokolski question, and feel free to tag-team this, whatever. When we go to, on February thirteenth, and we're given the question of adopting the plan, what does that mean? Specifically, are we committed to that? We all know this is a very expensive project. We know we've got to do a lot of head scratching about what we can afford or what the voters might decide to afford. We also know that this is in tandem with potentially the development of our outdoor large parks that we have not built for forty years, completion of our trail system, important other things like that. So who can comment about what it would mean to adopt this plan? Specifically, are we bound by such an adoption?
So, mayor and counsel, I, I do not want to understate the value of, and the importance of adopting a plan, and, and that it means something. Think of the master plans for parks that you adopt, think of the planning processes for transportation network, water, wastewater, all these various things. They're critically important for, for many reasons, not the least of which is all the community engagement, expertise, and public comment and feedback that went into developing the plan. And yet, when you adopt the plan, you're not guaranteeing, as much as many of us may in this room, hope to get a signature and blood from each of you, that if you walk out of here and they, and you say you're going to do this, that you're going to do it on their timeline. You're not, you're not. You're, you're giving clear direction, though I think, to the community and to your staff that this is the effort that's gone on. We accept it, amend it, tweak it, adjust it. And you would anticipate in some time in the future that this plan would move forward, continuing to move from whatever elevation you want to give it as an analogy today, the overall master plan, a hundred thousand feet, boom, we just dropped down to fifty thousand feet. You still have plenty of work to be done to ultimately decide what the actual project cost, scope, budget, timeline, phasing are for the future. Dusty, you've got a lot more experience than me on projects like this. Anything you'd add?
Yeah, I think that sums it up very well. I would, I would add that every project of this magnitude becomes a continual iteration, and there's always an evolution in that. And so, for example, if, if the, as we go, if a budget amount was set that didn't match exactly this, we tailor to it. And we keep the needs and the goals in mind. At a master plan level, the core team, the core team was charged with identifying the needs, make sure they're reflective of the Billings residents, and put forth those needs to counsel. And that's been really a summary of the process to date. Those have been captured, they've been put forth in a master plan. With, I would just add considerable thought to understanding there. It is not lost on the core team that this is an expensive project. There's been a lot of dialogue, a lot of back and forth, but ultimately, the, the, as I stand here on behalf of the core team, it was that, that it, this is the scale of project that is right for Billings at this time. We have been under rec-centered, if you will, as the rule of thumb would say, we should have one for every fifty thousand residents. And that was really what drove that decision. Now, all that being said, it's a continual evolution. And so you're adopting the idea that the core team has done that work, and then we can continue to evolve.
Okay, thank you, Dusty. And just remind us of Jeff and Kevin's expertise, since they, we, coming up against their hard stop, operations and cost analysis, is, is that really?
That'd be great. Yeah, if we have any questions directed.
Okay. So we'll start down here again, prioritize those costs of operations, just so we can get Jeff and Kevin's input. We can just go from here. Members of the public, once we're done with some questioning of staff, we'll open it up for public comment. So, Councilmember Trekey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am good.
Councilmember Pirton?
So, Dusty, this is a question for you. When you give the, the revenue projections, what time period is that? The first year, you're not going to perceive that you're going to get this, I would assume. So what is your time period?
That's a perfect question for me to then push to Jeff. This is, this is exactly what Jeff does. So Jeff, maybe you can weigh in on that. There are some assumptions in the ramp-up and how that occurs.
Correct. What, what those revenues represent, and the expenses for that matter, is a chronicle, mythical year. It's a full year of operation.
A mythical year. Can we turn him up? Can you speak up just a little bit, Jeff?
Okay. In the future, as you move forward, if you move forward, there will be a ramp-up budget. We have no idea what the date is that this facility, proposed facility would open. So it's difficult for us to come up and say it's going to be exactly this in this budget year, or that in another budget year, because we simply don't have those dates. So we just assume that this would be a year operation, you could say January one to December thirty-first. In reality, you will have a ramp-up, as, as Dusty mentioned. So you will have perhaps at least six months, perhaps as much as a year, you'll start having operational expenses start to build, to a point when you take substantial completion. And at that point, you're going to be operating that facility as, you know, totally on, on the city's dime, even though you may not be open to the public. So once those dates are known, you can go back and put a ramp-up budget and then speak to the impact it's going to have on a particular fiscal year.
Okay. Councilmember Pirton?
Okay, just one follow-up. On the expenses, I, I think I know on the revenue part of it, but on the expenses. So Jeff, on those expenses, what are you including in expenses?
We try to be as comprehensive as possible with our expenses. It's got all the full-time staff, all the part-time staff, exhaustive listing of a line item budget that includes all the commodities and contractual services that would be included. And we also have a line item in there for capital replacement, so that you start to build the fund to deal with the capital replacement of equipment as the building ages. And I had one other comment, if I may. Actually, I lied. There are two other comments. One is, the plan we put together does not include any potential cost savings in terms of the operation. What I mean by that is, it, it was just as a standalone facility, not the assumption that any one organization would run it. It would just be the cost to operate this center. And there could be some, or there would be some savings if it were a city-operated facility. And I know that hasn't been determined yet, primarily in the area of staffing, and then some of the other costs, as Cory talked about earlier, IT and some of the facility support line items. The other area that there might be some, some cost savings that have not been calculated in is in the area of ice arena operations. We recognize that there's a significant expertise and experience that has developed as a result of the Youth Hockey Association operating the existing ice arena. And we haven't talked about or haven't included how to infuse that into the operation. So there's another opportunity to perhaps economize the operations, and we have not included those at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, mayor. Dusty, ten years ago, I, I had a contractor. I said, I want you to build me a house. So I went and bought the land, and he quoted me an exact price to build the house, and he built it. Today, I don't see that happening. The builders are going crazy, pulling their hair for the cost. I go into Albertson's on Sunday, and I chose not to buy a dozen eggs because they were so expensive. How can you say that a hundred and twelve million today will build this in a year or two or three years from now? Do we need a fudge factor of some five or ten percent because you don't know what the costs are going to be?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Boyet. That's, that is true. We call that fudge factor contingency, both on construction and owner's operations. So that's, you're spot-on. I can't stand here and say it's going to cost exactly that. To my earlier comment, it's, it's, there's, there's a couple parts to this. One, it is an iteration and an evolution. So if today, we said hypothetically, the budget is exactly a hundred and twelve million dollars, we do not have one dollar more, which is always what happens when you pass a bond, right? That is the, we deal with it all the time on civic projects, educational facilities. You pass a bond, and then you live within that amount. So we pass a bond based on good information and our professional expertise on what that facility should cost. We do have contingency built into this, and we also have really good data on what a facility like this should cost today and what it should cost in two years. The, the start for construction does impact that. And when we say it's a hundred and twelve million dollar facility, then we bring a project in that's exactly on budget. And the way we do that is continue to finesse that. We're going to have these unknown factors that can't be planned for today. We might see interest rates go up again, and then we're going to see them potentially come down. And those are unknown factors that will impact how much square footage we could build. But what we have to do is make a really good, safe assumption, knowing all the historical data that we build it from, put a contingency on it, knowing that we could build for that, so much square footage, then we bring a project in on that budget. The project, we're going to continue to morph it and tweak it and shift it. And if we found, we, we dealt with this on some school facilities that we're designing. The bond passed pre-COVID, and then post-COVID, we're dealing with, we promised a community, we're going to deliver this facility, and we have dollars here that don't reflect this thirty-five percent on average building costs increase, right? But we still brought in a project on that budget because that's what we had to do. It means we have to scale down certain finishes, we have to tighten up square footages, we have to get really creative with how to jam all of that into the budget, but we do it. And so we make the best assumptions that we can today, and then we go forward with knowing that, that we can deliver it with that. I would also remind you that the amount shown today is not a bond amount yet, right? We, we're saying that every day that gets closer to the point in which we have to set that amount, we continue to finesse and tweak until we get right to that point where we say, now we have to set the bond amount or the final budget amount, and then we live within that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rupesas? Thank you. Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. I've got, I think, two quick ones. One, money one for Jeff before he has to take off. Jeff, from your experience, as we're trying to put together this package, come up with the, the, the total ask that we might make to the community to see if they will support it, what would be a good target number for us to present to the community as an opportunity to provide private donations to offset the public cost of this? Is there, are there some metrics for that that are used nationwide that we could kind of estimate into our thinking?
That's a great question, and it, and it kind of goes outside of our expertise. I know there are consultants and companies out there that would come into the I know there are consultants and companies out there that would come into the billings community, and based on some of the metrics they look at, could give you a ballpark in terms of how much they believe could be, how much they could generate through these kind of programs. But my experience has been, many of those companies don't stick around to see the final product. They will come in and estimate how much you could potentially raise. They'll give you a roadmap of how to do it, and help you along the way. But it basically becomes the billings community's job, if you will, to go out and make those asks and make those sales.
Thank you, I just want to plant that seed for all the amazing user groups we have here that we will need your support in many ways. One quick question for you, Dusty. We say, we say yes to this in February, we get it on a ballot as soon as possible. Let's just say all that happens. When we break ground, how long does it take to complete a project like this?
Yeah, great question. So from the, from design through construction, I would plan for, as a rough sort of rule of thumb, I would say about three years. That's it, for a facility of this size, we can likely compress it a bit from there. But between full design of the facility and construction to opening, three years is a good planning number.
Thank you, Councilmember Gillick.
This is, you've presented a number of times, I think I've asked my questions about the design. So I think most of mine are going to be more for us, process-wise, in terms of how we move it forward from here. So, no questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mary, I do have a few questions. Dusty, real quick, follow up with what Councilmember Boyet said, asked in Shaw about the bonding. You have 112, I think if I understood, you said that's the project cost today if it were to start. But I just heard it'd be three years. So in three years, do you know what the bonding amount would have to be? If everything goes well, like Councilwoman Shaw said, we'll be bonding in, in a few years, but we're going to need that for all, all three years. So do you know what the amount would be? And if everything goes well, or is this 112, six, the amount that we would bond today if everything got approved?
Well, so it would, if we, so we have, we have built contingency into that for, starting today through the point of construction. So basically, if we start this year to the point of construction completion, that's what 112 million covers with contingency. If we were to push this a year, then we have to put additional inflation on top of that.
Okay, and what, what amount of inflation? If this was delayed a year, then what amount of inflation are you using for contingencies?
Yeah, so that is, that is shifting all the time. We used to put a 4% to 5% per year number on it, but that has dramatically changed. You know, I would, I would probably put, we're starting to see things come down. If we were just to say one year, I would probably put 7% on it.
Okay, thank you. And then another quick question, I, the, well, maybe it's not quick, but the presentation we got on cost recovery showed...
Yeah, that's, my apologies, we had an update.
Okay.
That was, that was outdated information that...
So Chris, I just want to make you aware of that, that that can be changed on the public record so people can see what the actual presentation is. So what changed it from 78% cost recovery to 70%?
So, well, the 78 was just, there's been some errors in our side. So just disregard, the importance there was showing a range. So, and Jeff can speak to this. We have previously been, that the, what is identified in the full report as kind of the best case is 77%. Jeff feels that there's an opportunity to beat that, and we were talking internally about, you know, we can probably get that up 78 plus if there's some efficiencies found on operations. So that was the, what drove that number. But for coming back to this, we realized it's really important that we show what that range is. And Jeff has, within the operations model, there's a full range that goes from 70 to 77 in all the assumptions around both the revenue and the expense for those. And again, that's where, I think Jeff could speak to this further, but the opportunity to beat those, I think, is certainly there. And, but we just want to show the kind of worst-case scenario, best-case scenario.
Okay.
Councilmember Rupesas, would you like Jeff to comment?
Yeah, actually, because what you mentioned leads into one of my other questions, is about those operational efficiencies. If I understood correctly, you said if the city operates it, they have efficiencies. So typically, we don't see that. And if the city operates something, quite often it costs more. So maybe he can speak to why he's seeing this, if I understood that correctly.
Yeah, Jeff, do you want to speak to that, just from your experience around the country?
Yeah, not just my experience around the country, but having the opportunity to sit down as we develop some of these pro forma numbers, we worked with, side by side with the city and reviewed each line item and each staff position, and kind of talked about what resources the city has that might be able to help this without actually adding more dollars to the, this proposed facility budget. And so that's where some of those efficiencies come from. From the ice perspective, you know, you've got a group, granted, it's a volunteer group, but they have the expertise to operate an ice center. Could we potentially utilize them to come in and operate the ice portion of the facility? And obviously, they would, they would control and do the scheduling, and take care of all the maintenance, and collect the revenues, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there are some of those efficiencies that could improve the overall cost recovery if implemented.
Okay, that helps, because I, I, that's what I expected when the ice, ice community would come in. It's a volunteer organization, you would see some efficiencies. But that helps to know where that, the efficiencies are coming. The data actually came from the city or the Parks Department itself. And so I would like to, maybe as, as we talk more about that, to understand how those efficiencies come. And that would be to one of our committee meetings that we're meeting about that. So I'd like to dig into a little bit more and see where that efficiency is coming from. And then I have a couple more questions, Mary, if you don't mind.
Great. Recently, it came to light, you know, about the tennis courts being removed from the Elks Club location. And so when the research was done, and I know this was done years ago, where did tennis fit on the, the scale? We saw that whole list of different products in there. Where did, where did tennis fit? And was that just decided, no, let's not do anything because it was already taken care of? Or where did that fit in this scope of things?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I don't have that full survey, so I have to look back to see where tennis fell. It was not in the top identified priorities. I would, Jeff, around, around, you know, facilities around the country, are you seeing new indoor tennis factored into many of these?
Did you say pickleball? No, and Dusty, one of the reasons why we didn't talk a great deal about this through the market analysis, end of the operations into the pro forma, was essentially, when you look at the trending of tennis as an activity, it's kind of going down. And, you know, that could be, as a result, to more people playing pickleball. There could be a lot of, a lot of reasons. It's not uncommon to have kind of ups and downs in regards to how these activities trend. But tennis is not real big right now, and there were other tennis courts and tennis opportunities in the community at that time. And that's why that was not something high on our radar when we were doing the work. But pickleball, absolutely, you've got a lot of gym space, you can handle a lot of pickleballers.
Okay, and one last question, it's actually for Corey regarding the recreation. When you mentioned the recreation as far as, and you kind of alluded to that a lot of the recreation would be at the rec center as well, but yet you still, which I like, like to hear, where you said it's still going to be within the community. My concern is how, how a rec center like this, the efficiencies of just bringing everything to the center. So now from the West End, you have to drive all to the rec center instead of going to the different facilities you're doing today, or from the Heights, or wherever you are now, it's every at the rec center. I liked hearing that, but how do we make sure that that, the rec center doesn't become the only place that, that the kids have to come to, to participate in these centers because of efficiencies that the city has to accommodate?
Yeah, I appreciate your question, and I think it's important to understand that we will continue, as a recreation division, to utilize our schools or middle schools, put those programs where the kids are in those neighborhoods, continue to utilize our park spaces that are available. Obviously, our pools are in a couple different neighborhoods, so that, that will continue.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councilmember Owen?
Thanks, Mayor. I, Dusty, I've been trying to think about how to cram all of this into a single question, and I don't think I'm going to be able to do it effectively. So Mayor, I might have a follow up or two.
That's fine.
I think council's been consistent, that if we're going to do something, we should do it really well. And that this should be the type of facility that is commensurate with our community status as the largest city in the state, and quite frankly, in the region, with a very large cashman area for tourism. So I want to ask a couple of questions as to, does this facility work? So let's start with, could this facility, as designed, host a full hockey tournament, something on the courts, and a swim tournament at the same time? Let's say at the high school or collegiate level, for example. Can we do, do everything at once? Or do we assume only certain levels of occupancy at any one time?
That is a really good question. It can, it's designed to support each of those. If you think about hockey, swimming, and courts, it's designed to support, say, a tournament happening within each of those.
At the same time?
At the same time.
Okay.
That's correct. So each of them have their own stands, their own visitor area, their own support spaces. We have team rooms for hockey, while you have locker rooms for a swim meet. You have meet rooms, coaches' rooms. It's really designed to support all of those. Now, the important comment there is, you bring a lot of people, a lot of families, come to that type of event.
Yeah.
So the common spaces, it's hard to say exactly how many people you might have, but in terms of each of those, yeah, each of those athletic spaces, that is what it is intended to do.
So I just kind of want to follow up here, because I see really, and I mean, I think, I'm not being critical, I see really good team rooms for hockey. And then I see sort of a set of locker rooms, and I'm curious how that set of locker rooms could support simultaneously a swim meet and a court, even recognizing that, you know, on the courts, they're just going to stack up their stuff on the sidelines if they have to.
Yep, so, so there's both family locker changing areas, and then there's the other locker room. So again, that's where, it's, depending on the number of athletes we have, you can only fit so many bodies into the locker room. But we also don't want to design this for Easter Sunday, that we overbuild so much square footage, right? So it's, it's that balance of creating enough amenities for each program space to where they can support, and there can be overlap. But to say we're going to design it for having exactly 400 basketball kids, and 300 swimmers, and 400 hockey people all arriving at the exact same time, that becomes more of a programming issue for the operations, right? How do we stagger those? How do we make sure that if a basketball tournament's starting at this time, we don't want a swim meet starting at the exact same time? We need to stagger for those shared resources.
So two follow ups, and I want to kind of grab on that last thread there. Are you confident then, and I would love to hear this in public comment too, that the facilities that we have in here are sufficient for sort of competition level at the high school or, or, you know, amateur level? Because there are things that I guess I see missing, and maybe they're Easter Sunday things. So I'm wondering if we can do a facility like this without some sort of sports medicine onsite, or if that's assumed? And I think I've heard a lot about how swimming really needs like cameras and underwater viewing. I don't know if those are necessary or luxury, so I guess I'd like to hear the level of confidence that what we have here is what we need.
Yeah, okay, very good. So I can, I can say I'm absolutely confident that this is meeting the needs that we've identified. We have done exhaustive work within the community, with the core team. Could we always add more, of course, right? We can always continue to grow. But for the work of this process has really been, how do we right-size this facility to meet all of those demands, all the unmet needs within this community, but still thread an important needle that is, what can we actually support? How much can we spend, right? And understanding that there's TIF funds available was an important part of that conversation. But also saying, it was a lot around the conversation of one sheet of ice or two. We, we had one sheet of ice originally, and we had a smaller pool. And through these continual discussions, a 50-meter pool gives tremendous amount of flexibility and growth potential for swim meets, putting a bulkhead and running crosswise. I mean, there's so much more opportunity. Same thing with a second sheet of ice, in what we can host for a hockey tournament versus one sheet. So we, we feel that we've really maximized the potential, but still kept this to really right-sizing for the billings community. Sports medicine and other amenities like that, whether the pool has cameras, for example. Whether the pool has cameras will be a continual part of this conversation. That's really the level of fit-out within each of these spaces. We're still flying at 30,000 feet of space. We have allocated, it's important to note, we have allocated additional flex space, tied to both the administration and the upper-level administration areas for things like the conversation around sports medicine has come up. What level should we provide in there? Maybe we'll have a third party, a community asset that wants to lease that space and provide that service within the facility. And then we can carve some of that sort of flex space for things like that.
And then my last follow up, and Jeff may want to speak to this too. How much do we assume this facility is used for competition versus community rec versus practice for organized athletics?
Yeah, very good. So I'll let Jeff speak a little bit further on some of the actual assumptions, because we've made assumptions within the operation model of, we're going to host X number of tournaments, X number of swim meets, to get to the revenue that this facility would generate. But generally, the idea is, we really came to this both-hand importance when it comes to sports tourism and local residents. We have to make sure that the discussion was an example. Can we have, if we have eight courts, at one time we had four. If we have eight courts, can two always remain available for youth basketball locally, while the other six might be allocated for a tournament, right? That was part of the sizing consideration. So Jeff, maybe, do you want to add anything further there on the assumptions for competition versus local use?
Sure, Councilmember Owen's been asking some great questions, and I've been fighting my tongue to jump in here. But first and foremost, from the operations perspective, we consider all of that. And when we get a chance to go through the details tomorrow morning, you'll see that we have special events scheduled in there, as well as ample drop-in time. We have practice time for the hockey teams and swim clubs, and all of that stuff goes into, into our projections. Coming from somebody that has experience of operating a center that had two sheets of ice and a 50-meter pool, and spectators seating for roughly 1,500 in the natatorium, and another 1,000 in the ice rink, I can tell you that we hosted a lot of events, but we were, we never went multiple events on the same weekend. Although you have the space to do that, you have to take into consideration the parking, and what that does to parking. You have to take into a consideration of your hotel inventory, and restaurants, and things like that. And lastly, you also have to take into consideration the staffing, and how you're able to handle those crowds. To give you an idea of some of the numbers, if you had a 50-meter pool, you wouldn't necessarily have the competitors swimming a 50-meter length. You would have basically 16 lanes that you could do 25 yards in. Some of our biggest events that we would have in the neighborhood of 1,200 swimmers attend, it was because we essentially ran like three swimming pools worth of lanes for a short course, and it allowed us to take on a lot of athletes. So you can imagine if you had roughly 1,200 athletes to send on billings, what that's going to do to hotels and restaurants and things like that. Not, not forgetting the impact it's going to have on parking. And it is a challenge for your staff. The other thing I would, would say is, not calculated in any of this, is the economic impact. Because those dollars obviously aren't coming back into this cost center. But on a conservative level, you should easily be able to generate 5 million or more per year in economic trade as a result of events hosted at this facility. Now, it was not part of our task to do a study on that. That's just a conservative estimate I would have for you. And I think, you know, Dusty kind of touched on it, as far as sports medicine and stuff goes. But for a lot of these events, it's not uncommon to have the local ambulance and/or perhaps athletic trainers, therapy businesses... and/or perhaps athletic trainers, therapy businesses, but it's not uncommon for these organizations to make arrangements to have those services onsite during these special events.
Okay, thank you very much. So we still need some questions from Councilmembers Joy and Councilmember Tidswell, who's with us online. Jeff is going to have to leave here. Just to ask you, prioritize, if you've got something for Jeff, operations-related, or we can release him, too. Councilmember Joy and Councilmember Tidswell?
No, I don't have any questions on the operations side.
I'm just going to ask Councilmember Tidswell if he does, and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Joy. Councilmember Tidswell, did you have anything for Jeff on the operations, calculation of cost recover, things like that, that you wanted to pose for Jeff?
No, my question's for Corey. Did you hear me? My question's for Corey.
Okay, very good. We'll come to Councilmember Joy, and then back to you, Councilmember Tidswell. So, Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I would just like to compliment all the children and people who are sitting here so quietly. I can just hear your ears, and the kids are doing a great job at doing something really hard, which is sitting and listening very carefully. So, thank you very much. You've been very respectful and very attentive. What I have is a question, which I've asked before, and I do feel so very thankful, and I really appreciate the fact that so much work has been put into this, that I can sit here and feel very comfortable in the knowledge, in the information I'm receiving, because I've heard it more than once, and I've had a lot of opportunities to ask those questions. So that's really a big thank you, and I really appreciate that from the consultants also. My question is, the question I've asked before. There are concerns from smaller businesses that have gym-type facilities. What does this do to the private sector competition? I do recall that previously, I've heard about the consultants doing rec facilities in very small towns, and so maybe you could sort of address that. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Councilmember Joy. Jeff did speak on that previously, with some personal experience in smaller communities. Jeff, if you're still hanging on, any anecdotal feedback there, and then I can take it from there.
The one comment I would make is that, especially from a fitness standpoint, what we're talking about with the core committee and this concept is not the specialized equipment and services that you get from a private provider. This is more general, just baseline opportunity to participate in wellness and get a start down that path of healthy living. And what we typically find is, there's a migration of people that go from the public community facilities into the private sector, because you cannot provide the specialized nature and the quality of instructors and equipment in a public facility. So once people get initiated into a program, a lot of times, they will migrate out to where they can focus on their specialty, be it yoga, be it CrossFit, be it boxing, or whatever the case may be, there's a migration there. So, I'm not suggesting that the local providers would not see an impact on that. I would estimate that might be in the neighborhood of 15% to 20% year one, but over time, that comes back up, and you're just serving that many more people in the fitness industry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Tidswell, to you.
A question for Corey. Corey, you discussed, Corey, you discussed a wide variety of programming and great relationships that the rec center has had. Can you discuss any profit over the last five years that we've seen on those programs?
Yeah, Councilmember Tidswell, I don't have that information in front of me. We can always, our staff, and we try to cover all direct costs of any program or activity that we operate. So that's any of the equipment, the seasonal or temporary staffing that's needed to provide those programs. Then we do everything we can to kind of chip away at some of that indirect. So, I've got those numbers in front of me. Happy to provide that specifically, if you're looking at some of our programming.
Yeah, I would love to see those numbers. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that concludes a round of questions. We'll maybe have an opportunity later, if other things occur to council, but we do, we've kept the public waiting long enough, I think, so we want to give an opportunity for public comment, then people can leave. Let's, there's so many people here. Council, I'd suggest the following. We have some people, I'm sure, who represent groups, multiple numbers of people. What I would propose is, we go about a half an hour with our usual three minutes, tell us your name, address. Encourage people who represent those larger groups, come make their points. Don't feel any obligation to use all three minutes, however. And then, we'll see how that's going, and then we can maybe go to two minutes for the next 30-minute slice, and then a minute after that. And I'll do a little poll up front right now to get some sense for, generally, so you have an opportunity, are you in favor or against? On the procedure issues, Councilmember Neese, is that something you want to come out?
I would, I would like to, I think people that came out here, I think that we should hear from all of them if we can, but if they prefer to do as a group, that would be their option, but I think maybe cut it to two minutes. And I think any of the kids here should speak, regardless. So if they want to come up and speak, I think there should be a lot to come and speak.
Great, and I'm happy to stay late. We don't have a lot on the agenda after this. My only suggestion, though, is a lot of people, because our rules has always been three minutes, we didn't give any notice in advance of that, and they may have prepared three-minute presentations, and it's difficult to change on the fly. Let's at least start with a three-minute option and see how it goes, and we'll see. What you'll notice here is a lot of repetition. Once people have made certain points, we get it. So don't feel the need to repeat that, or if you do, make it very, very short. But we'll feel our way through that. But let's get started. I just asked that, do we make a little line at the back, so we know who does want to step forward? Move quickly, and just tell us your name and address, and we'll start with three minutes and kind of work down from there, depending on how many we have. Let's start, though, so that everybody has a chance to get a general sense. I'm just going to ask, for a show of hands, for two different questions. One, do you generally support the concept of the rec center? And then generally, do you oppose it? And so, and I'm using the word generally, because, of course, devil's in the details, and there's lots of questions. So, I'm just going to put those two questions to this group. If you generally support the concept of the rec center, would you raise your hand? If, oh, thank you very much. If you generally oppose the concept of the rec center, would you please raise your hand? Okay, very good. Let's start the process. Please come forward. That's a great idea. We will go in inverse order of age. Okay, go ahead. Come on, come up forward, and if somebody could bring the mic down a little bit. And just speak loudly into the microphone. Yeah, just tell us, tell us your name and what school you go to.
Tyler Arena, Boulder Elementary.
Great.
So, for the rec center, one thing that'd be really nice about the hockey arena is being able to host tournaments faster, because when we host tournaments now, they take, like, two, like, let's say, two days, because we're always having to constantly wait for the first game to get off the ice. And while we're waiting for it, sometimes, if we don't have enough space, once you get to 12 of you, you start warming up before the games, like, an hour before. And sometimes, you'll run into the other teams, because you don't have enough space to stretch out, get warmed up, and get ready to play. So that would be really nice with the rec center, and being able to keep your space away from the other teams, getting mentally prepared for the team. And like, also, sometimes, maybe be able to have, like, more people on the ice at once, because I know with public skates, if we could host public skates on each side of the ice, we'd be able to have a lot more people come in.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Tyler. Much appreciated. Yeah, beat that one. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Paxton Waldorf, and I go to Arrowhead Elementary. I play hockey, and I think it'd be really awesome to have two more sheets of ice in Billings, like, for future generations, and just so we could have more ice time and have more people be able to have the opportunity to skate and have fun.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do appreciate the sign of support for the kids, but let's pass on the applause. Go ahead.
My name is Samuel Wentz. I'm a swimmer for Billings Aquatic Club and for Billings West. I'd just like to say that having a bigger pool would make some practices easier, more fluent, having bigger swim meets, which would also help more. And I just think for the overall rec center is a really great idea, with the hockey rings, the courts, the swimming pool, all of it together would just help Billings a lot.
Great, thank you. Next.
My name is Heather Hasek, and I'm from 6607 O'Donnell Lane. I have spoken to you a couple of times before. The last time I was up here, I was given the feedback that you wanted to see public support. We have given you overwhelming public support in two feedback sessions with the survey results, and then again, when you asked for more public feedback, we all reported to the library. You asked for feedback again. We are here tonight to give you public feedback. I am telling you, the facility, it's perfect the way it is. We have met multiple times, we have discussed, we've debated, we have compromised. I think this facility is exactly what the city of Billings needs, it is exactly what the state of Montana needs, and as a parent of three competitive swimmers, I am telling you that we are at a critical point in swimming for the state of Montana. Our state tournament was not determined until two weeks ago, and it is scheduled to be held mid-February, because there was not a pool in the state of Montana that was capable of hosting state swimming anywhere in the state of Montana. It is now going to be held in Harden, which Harden, we are extremely grateful that they have given us this opportunity to swim, but I'm telling you, it's going to be a logistical nightmare, because they do not have the hotel amenities, or the restaurant amenities that we have in Billings, and it is an hour commute down the road. If the roads are bad, all of your money that could be spent in restaurants and shopping here in Billings is going to Harden, because people are not going to be able to come back and forth. We are not even going to be able to go back and forth. It's going to be very, very difficult for us to host swimming this year, and it is not going to get better. If it's going to take us the three years that they say it's going to take to get this done, we cannot postpone this any longer. We have an excellent design. I don't think anybody in this room is going to tell you that we need to do anything else other than approve this design as soon as possible, so that we can continue to move forward, because this needs to happen, and it needs to happen as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
I'm kind of disappointed you took away the applause.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Cole and Council. My name's Julie Seedhouse, I live at 104 North Broadway, number 308. I'm a real estate broker in Billings, and I'm currently the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. So I want to start by sincerely thanking you for the work you do for your community. As a resident who's been incredibly fortunate to spend 27 years here, I'm very grateful for people like you who are willing to get involved and do the hard work of leading, so thank you for that. As a real estate broker, I spend my days with people who are looking to move to Billings, looking to stay in Billings, and unfortunately, sometimes, looking to leave Billings. And a question that I am continually asked is, what is Billings doing to invest in our community and create a quality of place? The Community Rec Center will give me, and all of us, an impactful answer to that question. It'll create an amenity that not only benefits Billings in innumerable ways, it will also be a driver in attracting people in our region to our beautiful city. Moving forward, to find a way to make this work sends a strong message that we are indeed committed to quality of place. This project will also have massive and positive economic and healthy effects on the neighborhoods surrounding the site. The people, and especially the kids residing in this neighborhood, would benefit greatly by having access to this facility, and that's something we need to be really mindful of going forward. In fact, I have 100 letters and pictures from the students at Newman Elementary School that they wanted me to deliver to you, if I could do that. And they're very excited about the idea of this. Those of us who want to see this move forward are very aware that the approval of the vision for this project is just the beginning of the process, and we have a monumental task ahead of us, a task we are all very willing to take on. The good news is, we've got a literal army of people ready to roll up their sleeves and find a path to success. There's absolutely nothing to lose in a yes vote on February 13th. In fact, the message that you'll send to your wards and to the people that voted you into office is that you are fully and enthusiastically committed to our community, and that it's your priority. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Cole and Council. My name's Dax Rice. I live in, excuse me, Solar Spirit Trail in Billings Heights. I'm coming to speak to you from a point of view of swimming. I am a state official for swimming. I have organized and developed and ran multiple, I can, like, five recent state championships. I'm directly involved in running the state championship down in Harden coming up. I have traveled the western United States, running swim meets, setting swim meets up, and helping these run. You had asked earlier, and Mr. Neese, you had also asked about economies with clubs running sports. USA Swimming is run entirely by volunteer officials and paid coaches who are paid by clubs. Swim meets, as far as staffing and facility, for running the meet is no cost. I'd like to talk about some of the swim meets that could be seen within a year period of a facility like this running. We would potentially have three 800-plus, maybe 1,200-plus athlete events per year. Those events would run five to six days in duration. Two 300-plus to 500-plus swimmers, with that being a four-to-five-day meet. Eight to 12, three-to-four-day meets, and those would be 200-plus, maybe up to 500 athletes. So you can see real quickly that weekends, and even midweek through the weekends, would book up very quick in the aquatics facility. There is a huge regional draw, myself and my fellow officials for USA Swimming. I travel to Clovis, California, every swimmer, every summer, where we utilize up to four pools during that meet, and that meet swims over 1,500 kids during a five-day meet. We traveled to Willis in North Dakota. I've made that trip twice this past year, and I've run swim meets over there. I'm helping to run swim meet out in Seattle this spring at King County Aquatic Center. If you want to look at big aquatic centers that pull in a ton of people, these are just a few that you can look at and see how many people they pull. This would be a huge boon for the economy of Billings, huge for the athletic teams locally, and it would be beneficial to the region as well. I know that you've heard from people outside of Billings, like Hans Dersch out of Bozeman, and there are many others who would come to us to participate in a facility like this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and for your volunteer service.
Sean Seedhouse, 104 North Broadway. Good evening, Mayor Cole and City Council members. As always, I want to start with my appreciation for your time and dedication towards the betterment of our community. I've spoken to you in the past as a core planning team member for the rec center, and now I speak specifically as a... now I speak specifically as a staunch supporter of ice sports in Billings. In a previous meeting, Mayor Cole, you mentioned something to the effect of if ice is important to our community, where are the people who would support more of it? So I've asked a few people to stop by tonight.
We noticed.
Could I get, please get a show of hands of those who are still here who support more ice in Magic City? Don't worry, we're not going to ask for everyone to speak, but there will be a few of us who would like to share a few different messages and perspectives for you to consider. I personally would like to address a couple of things that have been brought up in conversations with City Council members recently. The first is an assumption that ice sports are mainly for wealthy people. As anyone in the ice community can attest, our youth programming survives on countless fundraisers and business community support. Ice sports are more than just hockey, but using the data from this year's registrations, only 53% of youth families pay their season fees upfront. The remaining 47% use a monthly payment plan option. And we see similar results with adult participation with 40% of our adult players using payment plans. We also host a very popular free gear swap every year, which players donate their old equipment to others who are getting into the sport or need to upgrade items and we often seek business sponsorships to underwrite the cost of gear for new youth players. Secondly, I know there have been and will continue to be conversations about supplemental private funding from major user groups. Councilman Rupsis has suggested a facility rental fee that could be added over a certain length of time or until any private funding percentage requirement was met. That fee could be charged to rent parts of the rec center for special uses like tournament and group sporting events. I have floated this idea by some of our ice groups, Sean Marshall with Aquatics and Corey Thompson with Parks and Rec, and the general consensus is that user groups will pay to play. And spreading any private contribution expectation over a longer timeframe is a much better idea than pausing this project and waiting for private donations. And lastly, the rec center project now has over five years of thoughtful planning built into its design and we are looking at another three years to build it. Please vote to move forward with this comprehensive master plan as presented today as soon as possible so we can take further steps to make this a reality. Billings deserves this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Megan Davis, 1017 Princeton Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Cole and City Council members. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm the Rink Director at Centennial Ice Arena. First, I'd like to thank everyone from the ice community who showed up today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the BAHO. We are currently operating a facility, a 40-year-old building with a 20-year lifespan. When Centennial was built, it was meant to be a short-term home for ice sports. This year alone, we have faced numerous mechanical issues such as glycol leaks, valve and sensor malfunctions, and water lines leaking. Not only is it difficult to find parts for such old equipment, but it is also time-consuming for staff to repair these issues and keep our system going daily. Aside from the mechanical issues, we also face challenges due to the building itself. The facility appears to be shifting slightly each year, causing structural changes that frequently prevent our garage doors from operating properly and even the locker room doors from opening and closing. The dated refrigeration system at Centennial does not have the capacity to operate year-round, leaving our community without access to ice for three to four months out of the year. Our building is staffed from 5:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. almost daily and even then, we are unable to give each of our user groups the ice time they deserve. Currently, our 8U and 10U programs are forced to practice together. Our house program only receives two ice times per week at a time of day that's less than ideal for children that age. Our thriving adult league has no choice but to play late into the night and our curling and figure skating clubs must accept less ice time than they need. The demand for public access is increasing rapidly. Due to the large number of programs we already offer, it is difficult to find time in our schedule for public skates and private events. While Billings continues to grow, we're finding it harder and harder to satisfy demand with a single sheet of ice. Aside from being the director, I am also a youth hockey parent. I have two children playing in the BAHO. The financial burden put on families like mine by having to frequently travel long distances in order to attend camps, tournaments, or even skate during the summer is one that I believe keeps many from participating in the first place. Our families spend a tremendous amount of money in other communities each season. I would love to see that kind of revenue generated right here in Billings, but we need more ice to do that. The addition of a rec center that includes two sheets of ice would not only help with the demand by our current users, but also allow us to provide opportunities to even more people in the Billings community. Our board is eager and ready to see this idea come to life and actively preparing to transition and scale to a two-sheet facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cole, City Council, and fellow citizens of Billings. My name's Evan Decker and I'm the Sports Tourism Manager with Visit Billings. I would like to start by saying how thankful I am to this community for welcoming me here with open arms. I've only been here for three months and I have quickly felt the love and appreciation from this community. Knowing that I'm helping to add more sports and recreation opportunities is something I would consider a dream come true in my career and a point of tremendous pride. I can speak to the length of the value of athletics facilities in, like the one proposed, but for the sake of time, I will make this short and sweet. It is simply in the best interest of the city, its residents, local businesses, and honestly, the entire state of Montana to have a facility like this here in Billings. This evening, I will let those more acquainted with life in the big-size state to speak to the emotional and community need for the facility, but tonight I will speak specifically to the economic impact. Before I comment any further, I have provided a economic impact survey for all of you to look at. Now, there's a lot of information on the front and back page of this. However, I do want to speak to something more directly. In the first 12 months of the doors opening for this facility, I estimate that there will be roughly a $25 million economic impact bolster that is geared towards money spent in hotels, restaurants, retail spaces, and other businesses located here in Billings. Considering that these projections are based on modestly filled event calendars, there is undoubtedly room for growth and even more tourism dollars to be had in Billings. I personally think the economic impact of a facility like this is much greater than 25 million, with the fact being that this would be the only facility of its kind in the state of Montana. I think we can safely assume that sports organizers and planners will be excited to host their events here and often. If the recreation center is planned as adopted and the doors open as described, Billings will be the first on the list to host many events local athletes and their families have had to drive hundreds of miles for or fly out of state to attend. This facility would make Billings the sports capital of Montana for youth sports and potentially for the entire region for certain sports. In closing, let me say this. The cost of billing, building this facility is greatly overshadowed by the benefits that have, that will come with having it here in Montana's trailhead. For businesses, it will come in the form of increased revenue from sports tourism. For families, it'll be a place to make lasting memories and to expand their healthy active lifestyles. And for at-risk youth, it'll be a safe space and an outlet to stay out of trouble. And finally, for Billings as a whole, it will be a space that we can truly feel proud of and a sign that we are actively adding to the quality of life here locally. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak today and I will be here for questions.
Very good. Thank you. Next.
Hello, Council. Uh, my name's Pete Hammond. I'm a resident of Bozeman, Montana. Uh, and I, first off, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the council today. I drove in today with my young son, who's also a hockey player, um, because my role at the state of Montana is I'm the Executive Director of Montana Amateur Hockey Association. And with that role, I have the unique opportunity to work hand-in-hand with associations across our state and in neighboring states as well for, for events and facilities like these. Uh, so my, my point tonight that I want to convey to you is two points. One is on growth and one is on community impact, which we've heard a lot about today. So I wanted to touch on a few numbers from, directly from USA Hockey to support the idea that hockey is exploding in growth, not only nationally, but here in Montana. In, in Montana, over the last four years, we've seen a 6.9% growth. To put that in perspective, nationally, USA Hockey, just last week I was in Orlando at the annual meeting, is celebrating a 1.2 annual growth nationally. So we're more than tripling, more than quadrupling the annual rate of growth here in, in our state. Additionally, uh, girls' hockey across the state is growing at an even faster rate. Uh, nationally, again, USA Hockey celebrates a 2.5% annual growth rate over the last four years for, for young girls. And in our state, we're fortunate enough to have seen a 7.2% growth. And I'll tell you, reading between the lines, those growth is primarily driven by, uh, communities that have two sheets of ice that can accommodate those growth. In the rings, in the communities that have a single sheet, we are not seeing anywhere near those numbers. Additionally, with community impact, I'm not necessarily here to talk about all the positives that, uh, ice sports offer, like higher graduation rates, leadership skills, um, healthy living, teamwork, things like that. I'm here to talk about some supporting numbers that you've heard already here tonight. Typically, in other communities in our state that have, in neighboring states that have two-sheet facilities, uh, they have the capability of, of, of running approximately 15 tournaments, specific large tournaments a year. Each one of those tournaments sees an economic impact of about $6,000 or $60,000 per tournament. Uh, that's on a very conservative estimate of 1.3 million in hotel and retail spending, uh, just down the highway in a, in a few of our local communities. In addition to tournaments, that's what we've talked a lot about, uh, there's the opportunity to host USA Hockey and MAA events locally here in Billings. Like you said, all of your, your folks here are traveling to different communities to host because they're only held in two-sheet facilities. We have preseason, mid-season, and postseason events, uh, as well as summer events, camps, clinics, trainings, things outside of just tournaments that bring a lot of, uh, family members into the communities that have two sheets. Additionally, uh, there's recently, in July of 2022, economic impact analysis was completed by the Northern Rocky Mountain Economic Development District, which was funded by the Northwestern Energy. Uh, and I just want, it's a 15-page report to, to support the report you just, just handed, but I wanted to give an outside additional perspective on that. Couple summary bullet points. Sixty, can I continue or is that it?
Go ahead and finish. Just try to wrap up.
Okay. That, that, uh, impact study found 62 million in gross economic output, 34.8 million in gross county product, 21.5 million in total labor income, 822 additional new jobs, full and part-time, 9.1 million in capital income from non-labor benefits, and $4 million in indirect business taxes and fees. So I feel like you have a very, uh, rich opportunity in front of you for both the youth in, in Billings and for the community as a whole. So thank you for your time.
And thank you. Thank you for coming over. Next.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Jody Adams. I live at 5520 Morning Star Lane. I am a new citizen to this community and full-time citizen in the last year and a half. My comments will be qualified by, I just left the field as a retired Parks and Recreation Director of City-County Parks. I come to you from a, a department in Missouri where Jeff Keating is from, and I know you all very well, A&amp;E, I am aware of them in our field. But I can tell you right now, we grew as a department three times when we started building facilities like this. I have been everything from the, the dream to the plan to the building, design, and implementation, and administrator at the highest level, responsible for the bottom line on these facilities. You, you have done your due diligence. This team has put together a great, great plan. You have the community behind you. You have an administration that has gone to the nth degree to make sure that they've done the research and make sure they're being transparent with the citizens. I hope you will consider moving forward with this facility. I cannot emphasize how it changed our community. We went from a City of Springfield department to a City-County department because of the demand. And I can tell you, it will be very rewarding someday when you wake up 10 years and 20 years from now. My last 20 years at the department, I was there 32 years. That last 20 years, we did anywhere between 100 million to 200 million of development. So I can share with you, if you look at Springfield, we mirror you in many ways and from the heart, you have it in front of you. And I hope you will do it for the citizens, the children, families. We are the safe havens and we are the gathering places for communities. This will be a very central hub for not only you as a community, we as a community, but also for the state. It will become a regional hub. And also, I will tell you, what we didn't expect with our development was going from local, regional to national. I will tell you, I serve currently on several NGVs, national governing bodies. Every one of these sports that you are bringing forward, I have served in these sports at the highest level and with the Olympics. I can just tell you right now, I'm the park kid, I'm the past Director of Parks, but I came from entry level on up. I hope you will move forward with this project. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Jody. Now, Billings, Missouri is just outside of Springfield. Did you get the wrong Billings when you were just, no, we'll assume you're in the right place. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Cole and Council. My name is Leanna Susat. Um, I actually live outside the city. I live in Ballantyne, but I am the current Executive Director of the Big Sky State Games. Um, as you all know, Big Sky State Games, we're entering our 38th year. We're planning on hosting 37 different sports. Um, we love Billings. Billings is our home. Unfortunately, um, there's two sports that we haven't been able to host in Billings. And, uh, well, not all of our ice hockey, um, due to facility, um, capacity is ice, ice hockey and swimming. So this facility marks, checks all the boxes for everything we need and makes me excited. Um, it puts us up there with all the other, um, cities in the region. Um, and with two sheets of ice, um, we would be eligible to host a state games of America. So thank you, um, and we thoroughly support the rec center.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Derek Wadup, 3648 Donna Drive. I want to talk to you as a dad, but I also want you to know my background on where I'm coming from. I grew up in Roy, Utah and worked recreation there for 10 years. I'm currently the head baseball coach at Montana State University Billings. I'm a member of the Boulder Arrowhead Little League Board and I also coach in that league. I have a daughter that currently swims competitively in Billings. Um, and when we moved here three years ago, she didn't want to because she couldn't see the pools and we moved right before COVID, so that kind of put a ramp in it. But then once she started seeing them, she was still okay with it, wanted to get back into it, but wondered why we didn't have like a rec center. That's coming from like a 10-year-old, 11-year-old mind. She's now 12, swimming in one of the aquatic clubs. And I'm also working with, uh, the Billings Amateur Hockey League, um, as the coaching chair there for that group, trying to help, excuse me, help develop, um, the experience that we give our youth. And the reason I want to speak as a dad, um, I also taught lifelong wellness for years, um, for 10 years at Salt Lake Community College before I moved here. The health impacts of lifelong wellness and just physical activity go beyond dollars and competitive sports and everything else. And I'm competitive maybe to a fault at times, but I really believe and just want to look at this from a big picture of what we're giving our adults, our youth, and everyone the opportunity to have through recreation, through courts, through ice, through swim, is mental wellness. And if we can be proactive in that, our community's stronger. And that's coming from a father of a 12-year-old, two, uh, two boys that are 10 and eight, and a daughter that's six that use courts, that use ice, and that use water. And they're bouncing all over the city because we can never find enough time as we do our programming and as we try to schedule practices. Thank you for your service. I didn't come with a prepared thought, so appreciate all you guys do. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next.
So I'm Doug Wild, uh, 4712 Audubon, and, and Coach Wadup kind of took all my thunder. Um, I've come before the council in a couple of different hats, um, land developer, um, but I mostly come as, as a, as a, as a parent. I happen to have four competitive swimmers. I am a little partial to the swimming crowd. But if you wanted to take your kid as a family swim in the wintertime, there is nowhere in Billings that you can do that. Um, you could say we can go to the reef, but that's not swimming, that's playing in water. Um, if, if you wanted to take your family and go play basketball in the wintertime, there is nowhere to do that unless you have play basketball in the wintertime, there is nowhere to do that unless you have a membership at a gym somewhere that you're paying. It really does, there's a big lack. And this facility that we got designed is perfect to fill all those gaps. And then, on the developer side of things, this is, our community needs this type of thing to bring it to that next level, to bring more people here to help grow our community and bring worthwhile activities for the community. All things that you know, but just wanted to say, you know, as a parent, this is huge. We've heard tons of feedback about, you know, competitive swimming and what kind of revenue it's going to draw to the community. And all those things are true, and all those are important because we ultimately have to sell this dollar number to the public. But the social impact is, I think, the biggest gain that Billings is going to have. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, and again, make a line if there are people who still would like to comment.
Hi, my name is Kristi Kankrow, and I live at, on the West End on Thunder Mountain, Thunder Mountain Road. And I don't have anything prepared either, other than that, obviously, this is a great facility, a lot of thought, and very intelligent people who are involved in every part of this process know what they're doing. They've put together something just phenomenal. I'm not going to just continue to bang a drum because now it's just noise, hopefully. Hopefully, you're still gathering and absorbing a lot. But I guess the point that I want to make is that we are a community of really intelligent, really motivated people. And I think that if you were to go across and were just able to say to people, okay, we love your enthusiasm, we know what you want, we get it, we get it, here's how you can be helpful. Because I'm sitting here thinking, well, what specifically can I do? How can I make a difference? Well-intentioned, have time I could dedicate, aside from running my kids all over from 2 to 7 nonstop. I probably am very similar to every parent in here, just shuttling kids, but I would love to be helpful. So if you guys, as you're going through this process, are thinking of ways that you can give us action items, okay, this would be, this would be really great. And especially, from what I'm understanding after talking to several council members, we need your support if this goes out. Okay, sign me up. How do I do it? So if you can give us specific feedback as well to help you make this happen too, I mean, I'll put my name at the top, and I know a lot of other people will too. I just want to know how I can help you and be impactful. Because I've got good intentions, but right now, that's all I have in a lot of ways. So you have the support, you got a lot, you guys are the generals. I mean, you've got a lot of good soldiers here too. So I guess that's just really what I want to say and contribute. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comment? No one else is standing up there? We do, okay. Again, just, do we make, let's make a line because we don't want to have this delay if we can avoid it. Anybody else wants to comment? Otherwise, we're going to close up public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dan Giddens. I live on Harrier Lane. I have kids that are involved in swimming. I was involved in sports all through my youth and high school career, and definitely am a big supporter of the Aquatic Center, as well as all the rest of the activities that they have planned for this great facility. Kind of taking a step back and looking at what you guys have to look at. Now, the big thing is, you know, there's a big price tag involved with it, but the big thing, I guess, is looking at what's the return on investment and what we're doing here. And we've had a lot of comment in, you know, all the different folks that have stepped up and provided their different insights. And, you know, it's not just a dollar value that is provided back to the community. I think we're seeing, you know, a lot of different pieces. It's, you know, a thing that can change communities, change people's lives, and providing a lot of different activities. You know, it gives a lot more activities for youth, not just youth, youth, young adults, older adults, as well as senior citizens to do activities throughout, you know, summer, winter, fall, spring seasons. It provides not just Billings with activities, but the entire state, as well as the entire region, with someplace to host a, you know, not just swimming, but a host of different events. So I think looking at return on investment is not just, you know, it's a big price tag, but I think overall, it's good for the community, it's good for businesses, it's good for the youth. There's a whole bunch of different things to consider, but as far as return on investment, I think you need to consider what everybody's saying here, and if there's a big loud positive motivation that everybody's pushing, that this is something that we definitely want, and I think a very positive thing that you should look forward to pushing, pushing forward and investing in for our community. So.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Another comment.
Good evening. I didn't plan to speak this evening. My name is Shannon Whipert. I live at 1605 Lone Pine Drive. I've heard all kinds of people with all kinds of perspectives, from Parks and Rec, to business, to realty, to hockey, to swimming. The one perspective I haven't heard addressed this evening, I'm an educator. I teach eighth grade history. I have a senior in high school at Billings West. So in all reality, this rec facility is not going to help her in her swimming career. She's going to be graduated and onto other things long before it will ever be completed. So I don't have that personal investment. But what I can tell you after 20-plus years in the district is how many families work their tails off to provide opportunities for their kids to play hockey, or to swim, or to play basketball, or volleyball, and a number of teams travel. And unfortunately, we don't have facilities in Billings to allow our kids the same opportunity to have the tournaments, and to have the swim meets, and to have the basketball tournaments, because we're lacking the facility. And from an educator point of view, I can't tell you how many kids miss my class on a yearly basis because they are traveling out of town to go to a hockey tournament, or out of town to go to a swim meet, or a basketball tournament, or a volleyball tournament. And I can tell you, if you have the facility here, it will benefit the community, young and old, but it also, I honestly think, will keep a lot of our kids in town, in school, still participating in their activities, and not having to leave the community in order to pursue their athletic accomplishments, but in the classroom as well. Because I don't know about hockey, but I know in swimming, most of our kids in the competitive swim team are some of the top students in the classroom as well. And if you want to continue to have that in your, in your community, it would be wonderful to provide a facility in their community where they can show that. I mean, just to toot our coach's horn a little bit, he has two Olympic qualifiers, and we practice in a facility that's older than most of their parents. And that's the God's honest truth. And we do the best with what we have, and they do amazing things. We've got a team that's in the top, I don't know, what is, what is the silver level team? Top 100 for what we have, and we do the best we have. If we had an immaculate facility like they've given you, it's amazing the potential that the hockey players would have, that the swimmers would have, and that they'd have in the classroom.
Very good. Thank you. Next comment, and we'll try to wrap up here real soon.
My name is Sean Gilmore, 909 Governors Boulevard. First, I think a really important thing, a gentleman started the evening by saying he needed a place to be able to dance for 25 hours. This would give him that place to dance for 25 hours. So, maybe not 25, but... I'm not a Montana native. I came from Colorado. And the last place my family and I lived, you could literally walk out our backyard, and within three minutes, you were at a rec center that had three sheets of ice, two ginormous pools, and it was, it was wonderful. As a family, we would frequent that establishment. But I also think of the, some of the most fond memories I have growing up came from rec centers. Going to various tournaments of different sports, going to watch Friends at different sporting events. So I think it's been well-established this evening that the, the return on investment is far greater than just the dollar. It's the memories, the family, the sense of community that it can honestly bring to Billings. And, and I will also say, not being a Montana native, I have had an overwhelming experience of community within Billings. I think it's, it's so wonderful and admirable to see our community members step up and do things to help make these types of establishments work and run. So I have no doubt that we would be able to see that is, as we progress with this plan. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Sorry, let me roll over. Aaron Noble, Tommy, 3713, Tommy Armor. I just want to, I guess my question is, why not? Like, I think we've had some really good reasons of why we should do this, but why not? Like, I get it, there's a price tag, but we've already invested piles of money in design. We have money for this. Why don't we put this, why don't we move this forward and get to the next step, and let the voters decide, do we want to pay for this or not? Like, I, I just, I really struggle sitting here, and I don't know, I don't even see what the next step is going to be. I want to see this move forward. And I don't, Mayor Cole, when you asked who's in support, I saw a lot of hands go up. When you said who's not into support, I didn't see any hands go up personally. So I just, I don't understand what we need to do to get this going forward. I think, yeah, it's an overall positive. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else, Council? Or, I think we'll close the public comment then. For members of the public, typically, we take a break around 7:30. Council, I don't want to cut short the discussion. I assume we're going to want to have some discussion, but let's talk a little bit about our timing. I saw Councilmember Purington's hand. Shaw, Councilmember Denise, Councilmember Purington?
Just a couple of questions. And I think, I don't know if this is Cory or who.
And Councilmember Purington, let me just clarify, because we're at 7:30 or not, sounds like you've got some questions.
Just two, and I think they're short ones.
Yeah, but we're gonna, if we have to come back anyway, we might be able to hold that. But if you think it's important for the public to hear, we can move ahead with that.
I guess you can decide that after I ask. Cory, how much, what is your projection for additional staffing for this type of facility?
Yeah, I don't have that information in front of me. Jeff King with, with the team has worked on putting all that together. And there would be some additional staff, and how that all gets laid out is a discussion we'll have to have in the future.
Okay. And then, just the other quick question, and I don't know if Dusty, you might be able to answer this since Jeff's gone, is what is the projection of participants in one of these, I suppose it'd be a tournament, it would be the major focus of one of those, whether it's basketball, aquatics, or hockey. What is your projected participation, visitors, as well as observers?
So, good question. Oh, that's off. So, within the model, and I might encourage, if you do, tomorrow morning, we are going to dig as deep into this as you want, but we've made assumptions for various, say, a hockey tournament, and within that assumption, there are a certain number of attendees. Then we've also made assumption for, how many daily passes are we going to sell? How many memberships are we going to sell? There's a very exhaustive list of all those assumptions. I don't know them offhand, but they are all built into the operations cost. So we run various scenarios based on Jeff's experience and say, if we're going to run a swim meet, how many, and this is where it gets a little bit harder to pin down, of, as you heard tonight from some of the public comment, you know, maybe this facility hosts the statewide State Games, or the regional State Games. That has a different level than we've anticipated. So there's a lot of other elements that this could host that aren't factored yet, but we basically run a hypothetical scenario and say, we believe we're going to sell this many passes, this many daily memberships, have, host this many events, and then build the cost model off of that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, other council members, if...
To address the public, if that's all right, before we break.
Absolutely. So, Council, how many people are going to want to ask additional questions or have comments? If we have nothing to really offer, we could just adjourn this and go on to item two after our break. But how many people think we'd want to have, just raise your hands, questions, comments, questions, comments. Okay, I'm seeing some desire for discussion. So, but, so we'll take a break, and then we'll come back, and Council can, and any members of the public can come or not.
Can we just keep going? I'm afraid they're going to leave. Yeah, I don't want them to leave.
Okay. Yeah, Council, you're content to move without a break?
Don't leave us yet, please.
On work. All right, don't leave, and feel free to take off your coat, because I'm going to, because it's getting warm in here. Councilmember Shaw, go ahead.
Thank you. So, thank you so much for showing up. It really is really very encouraging. I mean, I cannot tell you how many meetings we have where there's the police officer in the back, and that's really it. So, this is, this...
You matter too, Matt.
That's right, you also matter. But we are glad to have more people here. It shows the community's support. I can tell you from where I'm at, I like this master plan. I'm ready to vote for it. So that's would be my direction to the city administrator, put it on the November, or November, put it on the February meeting, let's at least approve that. But I also heard a number of people saying, how can we help? Where does it go from here? What is the process? So, Chris, you jump in if I get any of this wrong, but I just wanted to kind of walk you through that a little bit. So where it goes from here is, city council needs to approve the master plan. So if that's put up on our February agenda, we will be able to vote on that. And it takes, it would take a simple majority of us to approve that. But then, the question of where does the money come from, is we don't have the authority to borrow that on behalf of the citizens of Billings. We have to go to the citizens and say, will you authorize us to borrow it? Base, it's going to cost you this much, you know, just like a school mill levy question. So, Council has to have the conversation once, if we approve this master plan, what does that package look like? And then, I believe we need eight council members to put some, a question on the ballot. Is that right? Gina? Or is it just a majority?
I believe to put something on this ballot, technically, legally, you're talking about a simple majority, as with our other levy conversations, very advisable that we not do this on 6-5. If we expect something like this to pass, it really is critical that you're all very engaged, and hopefully get a strong, strong majority saying yes. But by law, you need six.
Just a simple majority. Thank you. So that's really the next step, is if this gets approved in February, then we can have the conversation of what is the timeline for, do we have a majority of council, or a strong majority that's willing to put this on a ballot to go to the public so you can vote on it? And then, when do we do that? Is it this year? Is it this fall? Is it next year? So those are going to be the conversations that will come out of this. But community engagement is going to be critical. And then, I think what I, what I really wanted to say to everyone who said, how can we help, is we are going to have to go out, you know, to the rest of Billings and communicate to them why this is an important investment for the community. And we are going to need all the soldiers here today, talking to your friends, your neighbors, saying all the things that you already did. So I just want to put that in the back of your mind, that that's really kind of the next big piece that will be coming if Council decides to move forward with this. So I'm very encouraged by seeing everyone here, and I just, I didn't want you to leave without hearing me say that, that I think this is a great plan, I think our community is ready for it. But the logistics of getting it in front of the voters is going to be what we have to figure out once this is approved.
Thank you very much. I recognize Councilmember Trinkie, and then we'll, Councilmember Rollin', Councilmember Kula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a really quick...
Cory? Well, just everybody.
Anybody, anybody who wants to talk. I just have a really quick comment. I really wanted to thank the development team, the core team, the people at South Billings, the park staff, and everybody else that was involved on that side, but also the community as well. Because what we ended up here with today was the answer to the question, what we need, and not what I was afraid of we were going to get, what can we afford? I really, you know, obviously, it's going to be a battle to fill out all those little zeros at the end of it, but at least we're trying to solve the actual problem itself. So I think everybody that's here, pat yourself on the back. Thank you. Thank you. And everybody that left, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Down here, we'll just keep working. Councilmember Kula?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Councilmember Shaw's, thank you for all coming out here. And yes, this is going to be put forward to the voters, and we were thinking it would be a November election, or September, actually, would be even better, yes. So I think September is what we're looking at. Things pass in Billings when people, when there's a good case made for it. I mean, when, when, when... I mean, when, when, when bonds or levy, uh, levis are put forward and there's not really a case put forward to the, the citizens of Billings, they often don't pass. But when there's a really compelling case made, um, and, and so that takes a coordinated campaign typically, and, and sometimes professionals are hired, and it could be like a hundred-thousand-dollar campaign, to put that. So, there's, there's probably some money that could, that might be needed, but there's a lot of volunteer power I see here that can compensate for a lot of that, too. Um, and so I think all the arguments that have been made here tonight, um, it's going to be a matter of figuring out how to get organized and, and get that out to people. So, you know, I think all of the different service clubs, uh, should be having plenty of speakers, uh, through the end of this year, or through September, um, plenty of opportunities for that. Um, and, um, yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Denise, Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have to say, um, the, the letters that we got, I've looked through those, they're really great. I don't know who brought those, but thank you. Um, and Chris, I don't know if that's, you can scan those in and so people can see them online through public comment, because that's kind of like ex parte communication in a sense, a lot of them. And so I think that would be great, and, and, uh, there's some interesting designs, if you guys get a chance to look at those. Uh, they actually, some of the kids actually gave us some design ideas, although it's already set, thank you very much. Um, right. So, maybe next time, you get the kids to, uh, do the design first. Um, I, I think, I think what we have here, by the way, thank you very much for coming out, the Mayor Cole challenge you guys, and you guys showed up, you packed the, the house, which is great to see. Uh, there is opposition. We have received emails and opposition, even though people have not raised their hands here, there is opposition to this, because the cost factors, we, we need to make sure how to fund it. Um, I am, as I've always said, I think I'm concerned about that make sure the facility is what, is what will work in Billings, and make sure it's not, as Councilmember Trinkie said, not cutting it to the dollar. I mean, we, we have to build it right. I like to see the two sheets of ice, um, because that's what the community says they need, and that's going to be best. I've heard testimony tonight that maybe one pool is not enough, but I don't know if there's room later on to build it, or there's been another facility, but, um, I am concerned that, you know, making sure this is what we need, and it sounds to me like Dust, you said, this is what the community needs and, as far as it will work here, so, um, I think we'll see as it goes forward. I am still very concerned about the cost, and what this is going to be and how it's going to be paid for, not just the initial build, but the ongoing cost to residents who have a difficult time now, just affording to pay their electric bill, or, as Councilmember Boyet said, just buying food. It's, it is, there's, our economy is going to be difficult, and so we'll see how things will, but thank you very much for coming and showing and, and, uh, bringing this to, to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I think the question has been asked a couple of times, is, is what's next and what do we do next? And so I just want to share my thoughts on that perspective. There's a couple of comments tonight that I think were really well taken and really point to where things need to go next. There are challenges with this project, and so I would invite and encourage the people who want to be soldiers to avoid the temptation to do a sales pitch and pretend that there aren't challenges, and instead, let's just wrestle as a community with the challenges. And there are two that are significant for me. Other council members will share their perspective. Um, we have to wrestle with equity issues related to this, right? I'm a sports mom. I get the investment and the expense. Um, we're looking here at a facility that we will ask the taxpayers first to build, and then we will ask them to subsidize it, and then we will ask them to pay to go to it. And so if we're going to do that, we need to have a conversation to make sure this is a facility that benefits the entire community, and not ask people who are on a fixed income or a lower income to subsidize, um, those of us who have the luxury, frankly, of putting our kids in sports, even though for lots of us, it's a struggle to do, and it certainly is, is one for me. Um, I hear us talk about after-school programs and getting schools in, and I think those are positive. We just have to wrestle with the fact that a project of this size can take up a lot of space, and so when we talk about equity, it's not just the affordability for everybody, but what it does to other development. We have massive parks around the community that need to be developed, those include recreation assets. And so does a project like this take all the oxygen out of a room and make it difficult for us to invest in our other recreation amenities around the community so that everyone benefits? Again, these aren't no's, they're just things we have to talk about as neighbors and communities. And the second is, for me, public safety. Um, we have a significant crime problem in this community, and I fully believe that a facility like this can be a critical part of crime prevention, which I think is the thing council needs to talk a whole lot more. At the same time, when we're looking at ongoing annual subsidies and ongoing taxpayer fees to attend a facility like this, we have to think about how do we keep a community that's safe, so that people want to do tourism here, and invest in the amenities that make it the quality of life to live. It doesn't mean that we say we have a public safety problem, so we can't do this, or we're doing a rec center, so hope people can figure out crime on their own. We just have to wrestle with, how do we prioritize? How do we allocate resources? And how do we respect the taxpayer that doesn't have a bottomless wallet? Because we know the county is looking at challenges, we know the school board's looking at challenges, and ultimately, it doesn't matter who the taxing jurisdiction is when it all comes out of taxpayer pockets at the end. So, I would encourage you, you go out and you talk to friends and neighbors and supporters and proponents and opponents and questioning people, just engage in this conversation, avoid the sales pitch. We just, today is, is the next step in what will be a long process, and we have to just simply talk about candidly the challenges, so that we can work together as a community to find solutions, and I'm confident that we can. So, um, those are my thoughts for those of you who are looking for next steps, and certainly what I'm looking at in making this decision tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wright, or, uh, Councilmember Troy?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor and counsel, and, and I, I do feel a great privilege, because I've had this seat at council long enough to remember back to the steering committee, and one of the, one of the ideas that was absolutely important to the steering committee was that this not be a facility that leaves out the neighborhood. I insisted on that. I've insisted on it, I'm really going to insist on it. It can't leave out the neighborhood. When we took a tour of Denver, we saw a lot of different facilities, and one of, uh, one of them was in a neighborhood where that was absolutely a piece of that neighborhood, and it built community there. This can do the same thing. Um, and it will be. It will be something where we do, um, we will not exclude the neighborhood. So, I just want to talk about one issue. I was doing my emails, and I came across a health assessment, and it kind of clicks, sometimes things click. So, I looked at childhood obesity in Yellowstone County. So, the top health challenges that we face are mental health, substance abuse, and obesity. Within our community, we have, um, these numbers are from twenty-seventeen. Um, the nationwide, the percentage of children, that's between the age of five and nineteen, who are overweight, is twenty-four-point-two percent. In Yellowstone County, it's twenty-eight-point-eight percent. Um, for obesity, between the age of five and seventeen, that other statistic was for seventeen, the nationwide, the percentage is nine-point-five percent. In Yellowstone County, it's fourteen-point-four percent. Um, when we talk about return on investment, and we talk about economic opportunities, and we talk about business, the biggest return on investment that we'll have is the health of our children. Some of the things that overweight and obese children suffer from, depression, diabetes, high blood pressure, low energy, asleep, apnea, joint pain, and skin problems, they don't sound like inconsequential things. What we're doing is investing in our community. We're investing in our children, we're investing in the health and the well-being of our community, whether that's mental health, whether that's substance abuse, or whether that's, um, activity level for children. We have to do this. This property that we bought is actually in a food desert. Um, there are more than, there's more than one component of, of obesity and overweight, but we have to address them, and this is a, an opportunity for us to address an investment that's much larger than, uh, restaurants and hotels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, not sure who else wanted to comment. Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, this will be on February thirteenth before us again. Will it be a consent agenda? Will, or it'll be a, an item for discussion?
Depends on your direction to me. If you want it on consent, that's where it'll be. If you want to have more of a conversation, I would anticipate you'd put it on the action item. Um, that, but, w- we look at consent as where we generally have strong consensus, or we're adhering, we're adhering to a policy that's clearly been already defined, so, when you're awarding bids and things like that. So, I would have anticipated this would be an action item, not a consent, assuming you, you would want to debate some of those things, but if your direction to me is, actually, we're pretty clear on what the next step is to adopt the plan, I'll absolutely put it on consent.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ripses?
Thank you. Chris, go ahead and put it on consent. Um, I, I just want to say two quick things. Uh, first, and, and it kind of ties back to what Councilmember Owen was saying, um, public safety is a big concern. Uh, and it's not just this latest master plan, because there are many that we have adopted over the years that we haven't built out. Um, this is going to be the latest of them, and what we're actually going to end up proposing is not just this rec center, it's going to be a package of, of plans around the community that we've neglected for years. Um, and, and so, there's going to be something for everybody in it. Uh, I really appreciate all of you coming out here and supporting, and in a lot of cases, your kids, and our, our community's kids, and their opportunities through this rec center, and, um, but, eh, not everybody plays hockey, not everybody plays, swims. Um, there are a lot more opportunities, uh, for kids out there to get involved and to be active, right in their neighborhoods. Uh, so whether it's Castle Rock or Colson, uh, or Cottonwood, or the new water reservoir that's coming, we've got a lot of opportunities here to give people the recreation facilities that a city like Billings needs. Um, so, that's some of the work that we're doing, um, and it will directly tie to public safety, uh, because we are going to activate a lot of spaces that are sitting empty and unproductive right now, um, and are not improving the safety of our community. So, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is, the, the challenge that we are going to hear about is, is funding. Uh, and it always, in our city, our state, comes back to property taxes. Um, and the, the challenge to us always is, well, why are you putting this on the backs of property owners, again? We don't have a choice. That, that policy is set in Helena. Um, if we want to do things in our community that require community-level investment, right now, that's the only option that we have. Um, but, the, the people that could change that are sitting up in Helena right now. I'm not saying they're sitting doing nothing, they're busy, they're active, uh, but they're ready for your call. If, if we want to, you know, we've heard a lot about the economic impact that this will bring to the town, and that's nice, but it's not going to help pay for this. Honestly, it's not going to pay for this facility, because we don't collect the sales tax. You know, we're going to spend a lot of money on hotels and, and restaurants, and those are great things, I'll go eat at those new restaurants if they get built, um, but it's not going to help pay for this facility. We can't capture any of that new economic activity to help pay for this. If you want to see that changed, call your legislature in, in Helena, and say, give us some options. Help us out with a way here that we can take some of this new economic activity that's going to be generated around this great facility, and feed that right back in to help pay for it, instead of making our property owners pay, pay for it. Otherwise, our hands are tied, we have no options. Um, so, uh, you soldiers out there that want something to do, uh, right away, that's a great place to start. I'm not sure if it's going to be effective, but it, it doesn't hurt to, to try, right? If you had this kind of draw, uh, tonight, to just hear about a plan and, and to talk to us about it, um, maybe you can get enough people calling up to Helena, uh, that might get somebody to think twice about something. Because right now, they're all just kind of scared to, to do anything that, that reeks of taxes. Um, but that's the help that we need. So, uh, there's something for you tonight, and, and we are going to be working over the next couple of months to, to figure out what that package looks like. We're going to be very thoughtful about it, try to tie everything directly to public benefit, public safety, what this community actually needs. Um, and we're going to be, we're going to be hammering at this over the next few months, so expect to hear a lot more about this, and, uh, appreciate you being engaged tonight, uh, and let's stay engaged throughout the rest of the year to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, uh, Perrickton?
Uh, Chris, I'd say put it on the regular agenda, because I want to hear what comes from your meeting, because I won't be able to go, and I think there were some questions that, you know, uh, Dusty may have to be answered. So, I think there, there are some things that still need to be discussed, and there are some things that the legislators can do. It's not a popular one with the, the tourist industry, is that we could actually, and there's a bill in Helena right now, that we could take half of the, the, uh, tourist bureau's income and put it back into our community, if we could do that. And it's not a popular bill, uh, for some, but it's out there, and, uh, I think it's worth looking at, even for this session, to see what we can do with it, and see if it would help us. Because, um, I agree, uh, there's definitely a need. I see a lot of need in our community for youth services, for these kids, especially the kids, the low-income and the, and the kids that are at, at risk right now, we need something for them. And, um, you know, whether or not they can join in league play, who knows, but I think there's opportunities for them. So, I think, you know, I think the facility is a, is a good plan. Again, twenty-five percent of our, um, population are low-income, people on fixed income, seniors and disabled, and a lot of those are property owners. So, whether or not they could afford that, that's to be seen. So, that's why it goes to the, the vote of the people. So, anyway, thank you for showing up. I think that's great. It's good to, to hear from a lot of you and see you here.
Thank you very much. It looks like we're wrapping up. I'll just, uh, a few closing comments. Um, it's all been well-stated, so, um, ditto. Um, I, I, I certainly support, uh, letting the voters decide and moving forward. I appreciate the, uh, everybody's efforts here to be here. Um, I would continue, uh, but this is not over. So, please, this is maybe just the beginning, so, uh, keep up your enthusiasm. I just wanted to repeat a couple of things that we've been saying, which is that, uh, there are very real competing needs out there, in addition to the rec center. Before there was a, even the idea of a rec center, uh, we knew that we had not invested in large regional parks in our community for almost forty years, uh, along the river, on the far west end, Cottonwood, completing Castle Rock in the Heights, completing Centennial Park, uh, at Thirty-second Street, uh, completing our trail system. These are all things that go way, way back and, um, uh, have a very high rate of return also, uh, for our community. So, uh, that's what we're looking at, trying to create a package, but that, of course, drives up, um, the cost. Um, and although I will, uh, vote to adopt this plan, I just want to be very clear that adoption of the plan does not create any sort of guarantee that that's what will eventually be suggested to the voters to vote on. Obviously, it'd be something quite close, but because of these cost considerations, we've got to be able to look at everything and make some determination about what the voters, uh, would, um, uh, would approve. I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Ripses mentioning the, uh, obvious, which is that all this economic, uh, activity that would be generated clearly by a rec center does not come directly back to the city, uh, for us to be able to use to pay for this, because we don't have a, a sales tax. Um, last thing, I'd be interested, and we don't have time to get into it tonight, but, um, to find out from our consultants, whether there's any sort of analysis of the cost per user, um, that, uh, there's, there may be certain types of activity that are a very higher, very much a higher cost, uh, to the community, and, and we don't want to nickel and dime and look too closely, um, at that, but, uh, it's still a consideration, and it might be something that would inform what we have to look at in deciding what to cut, but also maybe what we would want to see from the community in the way of private donations, or the cost of, uh, 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 user fees, uh, which may be very different, depending on, donations, or the cost of user fees, which may be very different depending on the cost of the facility or that part of the facility for that user group. All of those things are subject to further discussion. So with that, counsel, I am going to say we're done. I see some nodding heads. Again, to the community, thank you. This was very, very helpful for us and I think for our entire community. So we're going to take a break now, be back in about five to 10 minutes. We'll continue with our agenda at that time. Thank you again.
They only love you for a short time.
Yeah. Okay, if everybody takes a seat, we will get started. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for discussion on item number one. We ought to start charging admission. We could cover a lot of these costs, right? Boy, we thought we were so popular, and now there's nobody in the audience. Councilmember Tinswell is still with us. That's good.
Matt's here.
Just still Matt.
And, yes. Then we're on item number two, local governing authority appointments. Chris, you want to just remind us what this item is about? And I guess we'll just open up for council discussion, but we don't have a presentation, I'm assuming.
No. So the agreement that was reviewed and approved by the county commissioners, this city council, Laurel City Council created that, a governing body of five. Laurel's already made their appointment, and we need to decide, you need to decide, which two of you are going to sit on that board. It got added, so it is on next week's agenda. If you looked at your agenda right away, you might have been, "Where's it at?" Well, it got added this afternoon, because it was intended for you to be able to take action six nights from tonight. So no action tonight, up to you, how you go about selecting two. But we need to assign two individuals to be on that board with the other three.
Okay. So I'll kick it back to councils, just sort of talking about the process here. I never really like this, about whenever we come up to these issues. But Councilmember Neese, Councilmember Boyet, Councilmember Parentin, I'll have your hands up.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I thought about this, and I'm sorry I didn't get back to you earlier last week when you were asking about it, but I think it would make it very simple and easy and consistent to just assign the two titles, the mayor and the deputy mayor, to that. And then that way, it wouldn't, there wouldn't necessarily really need to be an appointment. Once they're elected to that position, that's the role they fill. If there's a change in deputy mayor, that person changes, that's who they fill. And so I think that would probably be the easiest and simplest way to do it. One decision, it's done.
Councilmember Boyet?
At least every two years, there would be at least one change, and maybe every four years, there'd be two changes. So it would continually evolve. So I think it'd be a lot simpler than having wild discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Has there ever been a female mayor in the city of Billings?
I don't think so.
We need to change that. I need to change that.
Not yet.
Council, Councilmember Boyet?
Mayor, I guess I'd like to move in direction, having towards the staff, to look at our discussion here, that we would like to have the mayor and deputy mayor assigned to the two people. That way, it would continually change permanently.
If that's a motion, I'll second that.
Motion for direction of the staff.
Okay, that's the motion before you, discussion on the motion, before we go to a vote. Okay. What does the position pay?
Double.
Okay, we'll have a vote. If, do you want to, Chris said, okay, looking quizzically, so I would, okay. So we'll proceed to a vote on that. If in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I thought you were going to say nay, too.
Well, yeah. Whatever you guys want.
My only inquisitive look was around the fact that we won't change the packet for next week. It's already out. It's been amended. So I presume you're going to make a duplicate motion next, or in six days, and that'll be in the minutes, and we can decide if you're looking for it to, I wouldn't change it in the agreement we have. That's just the way in which our body has determined what the two board seats will be.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, Councilmember Tinswell, I didn't ask you to raise your hand, your little yellow hand, on one, or verbally. Do you want to clarify how you voted on that?
I'm an aye.
You're an aye, okay. So motion passes. Councilmember Trekey voted in opposition. Should have, I guess, asked for public comment, but I'm not quite sure what the point is. Is there no members of the public other than Matt? And no one else online, correct? So we have no public comment on that. And that concludes item number two. We'll move to item number three. Council leadership team retreats. Chris sent out an email about that, which he can describe. Chris?
Yeah, thanks. So just thinking about, a number of you commented over the previous year that one of the highlights and effective things we did last year was get into a room, spend, you know, Friday afternoon and early evening and Saturday morning, talking, working through the future of our community and where we want to go. And so the assumption is, we need to do that again. I'm presuming we're not starting from scratch, the same 11 of you are here, for the most part, the same department directors, but that we would continue to advance that dialogue and that discussion. I will say, I finally got a chance to talk with my staff about the spring break schedule, and many of them looked at me and said, "Chris, weird, I'm already out of here." So ultimately, I think it's just giving all of us enough lead time to know what's a time schedule that works, and whether you want to replicate an afternoon followed by a full morning as a good timeframe, and whether you want to do that a Friday, Saturday, or which two days of the week works best to do that kind of thing. But ultimately, it's time we start figuring out dates on calendars, looking at possibilities so that we can get something locked in and get preparing.
So immediate question is dates in particular, and how, you know, one day, two days, two weeks solid, I don't know. Councilmember Boyet has his hand up?
Yeah, just one thing is, let's not have it at the depot. I couldn't hear anything with an iron train going by all the time. So I'd like a quieter place.
I would second that one. Councilmember Rupesis and Councilmember Parentin?
One of the things that was very helpful last year was having a facilitator, so presumably we would do that again. Yeah, I didn't mind the depot, but I'm happy wherever. I also thought it was nice to have two separate sessions, instead of having to spend, you know, eight hours straight, Friday night and Saturday morning. For me, it worked well. I thought that was a nice way to split it up, and we came back fresh on Saturday morning.
Councilmember Parentin?
Well, I guess my comment is, and this may just be me, but I was actually thinking every other year, I don't know that we need to do it every year. I know Roy and I were just talking about, all of a sudden, this legislative committee, I mean, it is so overwhelming. And I mean, I'm glad we're doing it, but I'm just like, dang, you know, between trying to read bills and trying to keep up with when they're there. And I think our lobbyists have not addressed the ones that I think that we need to be addressed. So I'm just thinking, you know, I don't know, a retreat this year, do we need to do one every year? I would like to hear your comments about it as well, so.
And just a kind of a question, the session ends the first week of April?
May.
Not until May. And it's the first week of May as it wraps up, or?
Ninety days, and sometimes they can do it earlier.
So January, all of January, February and March, but that would put you into April.
The 90th day mayor is May 9th. And I would just note that the-
Oh, because we're kind of weekends.
Right. And the first week of March is transmittal break. So that is sort of a brief reprieve from activity.
And they only meet four days a week.
Oh, okay. All right, just for that clarification. So fundamental question about whether we need it every year. Councilmember Shaw?
I think we should meet every year, if for no other reason than it helps us build relationships and trust with the directors, who we often only see in city council. So from that alone, I think it's worth doing every year.
Councilmember Neese?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think yearly, and I also like the Friday night, Saturday morning, that worked well. I think yearly, and I also like the Friday night, Saturday morning, that worked well. Take off a half a day of work instead of a whole day or something.
Councilmember Rupesis, Councilwoman Rowan?
Yeah, I don't think we need to revisit our priorities. The priorities that we set last year, I think, are still relevant. We can have, focus on different conversation this year. Obviously, we've got a big conversation here with the Parks and Trails and Rec Center issue, we've got public safety strategy issues that we could work through. So, I think there are a couple of large topics that we repeatedly say, we would like to have some time to sit and focus on them. So, we might be able to pick off a couple of those and fill up, you know, a couple four-hour sessions with it.
Thank you. I like the idea of a rifled approach, talking about these three things or something, rather than the shotgun, right? But, Councilwoman Rowan, did you have...
Yeah, I did, just real quickly, I just, I actually think we should do it every year. I would note that when we were at this point last year, all of us baby council members were told not to upset the apple cart. The council had already set priorities, and next year, meaning this year, would be our year to have input on what those priorities would be. So, I do think we should get to a point where we set goals and then have an interim sort of check, does this make sense? I don't actually think our goals would change this year, if we went through a full sort of goal-setting effort, but that was the commitment that was made at the start of last year, is that this would be the year where we would revisit goals and allow new council members who might have new priorities to bring them. I agree with Councilmember Rupesis, that I think the goals are unchanged, and what we need are work sessions to actually develop strategies. I am very frustrated, we still don't have a public safety strategy, we obviously need a Parks one, so I think some work sessions on the big issues that are still sort of floating out there matters. But at some point, I mean, systemically, new council members should have an opportunity to weigh in on setting priorities.
Further discussion, in particular about a date, and do we try to do it within the legislative session, or wait until legislative session is kaput? And then we're into the budget?
So, what about March 3rd and 4th?
So, Chris and I, and I believe the mayor may be out of town, at the Montana Executive Forum on the 3rd.
And I will not be, but the, March 3rd is the Mayor's World Languages Dinner, which is a, for me, I have to participate, I, yeah, I have to participate in that, but I could still participate in the Saturday morning event. Councilmember Boyet?
Chris had indicated the week of March 13th. What about the 17th and 18th, the Friday and Saturday?
It's spring break, which...
So, what's that got to do with you?
I have a kid, yeah.
What's that got to do with the city?
All right, who's going to watch my kid? Is just the kind of a fundamental question, but...
Yeah, they can come.
People might want to travel or be out of town. I think we should stay away from that week.
So, what's the 10th and 11th?
I can do the 24th, 25th. I'm just leaving this on.
10th, I heard, 10th and 11th.
Yeah, same problem.
Okay, same, it's the beginning and the end of spring break, okay, so...
24th and 25th?
I will be in Seattle.
I think it might be helpful to maybe have Chris weigh in a little bit on budget calendar, because I think we want to be able to talk about things that might need to appear in the budget soon enough that they could actually be incorporated in the budget. So, pushing into late May, or late March would concern me a little.
How about February?
I like February. I'm for any weekend in February.
It is February.
Well, it is February.
It is February, yes.
It's not, but...
What were your dates, Chris? Somebody didn't know.
I had mistakenly, frankly, and it was, it was in part thinking of, and it works opposite for some of you. For some, maybe worked well, school was out. For those with young children, no, that's exactly the opposite. Who's going to watch kids? So, we had jotted, I think, the Friday, clearly it's Friday, Saturday, that's the preference, and so I think we maybe ideally identify two or three. I can also work with the staff and come back to you and say, okay, let's lock in here over the next week or 10 days. Is, we talked this morning, those same ones you're talking about, March 10, 11, if you get too close into February, I think there's also some good prep work to us to be doing. I, too, some of us have talked about this, have presumed that the two media subjects we would get into is refinement and detail of the public safety conversation and strategies and prevention strategies, as well as parks, trails, recreation. Frankly, those, if that's agreeable, maybe those two really would be, we'd make one of them the subject of one four-hour session, and the other one the subject of the other four-hour session, which on the director's side, I'll encourage my team, honestly, I'd like them all to be engaged, but I know they also have schedules and things, too. It'll be critical, some people have to be in the room, some others, I may say. Great if you can be there and be available, but they won't be essential to a conversation if it doesn't directly deal with their department. So, I'd ask for later February, not like first or second week, because we're already, we're already into, yeah.
24th and 25th?
24th and 25th?
Any sort, what weekend of the year?
March.
That was March, right?
Yeah.
Which one was March?
That fit for you, too.
You're good with that, though?
I am around, I'm okay with 24th and 25th as of February. Is everybody else in town and available? Councilmember Rupesis? Nope, okay. I'm seeing thumbs up, I mean, you've got to check with your department heads, but, and not everybody's going to be able to participate. Councilmember Tinswell, are you, do you know if you're available on February 24th and 25th?
I will be.
Okay.
And the other date after that is 31st and 1st.
So, would that following weekend also be a potential, that would be March the 3rd and 4th? No, that's, I'm sorry.
I would just skip the Friday night, which is a little more social, if I remember right, what we did last year, but...
And then if we stay completely away from spring break, then we get all the way to March 24th and 25th, was...
Councilmember Joyce?
Okay, all right. So, February 24, 25?
What about March 31st? We'll see for you.
Oh, well, Castle, then.
So, is that actually another option, that last, what was it?
March 31, April 1?
Is that another option?
It's going to be hard to be in the budget.
I mean, I'm not overly concerned on the budget in that, the budget's obviously a huge deal, we're working through it all from now, preparing it, and we know that public safety and these issues are top priority. So, I don't think the budget calendar, we're not going to wait on budget things in preparation until after we have this retreat, we'll certainly refine things at it.
So, probably so. March 31st, April 1st would be a alternative? Okay. Does that still work in parks, the park discussion we need to have about the parks?
I'm sorry.
Does that still work with, well, with the parks? Discussion we have to, okay.
And then I think to Councilmember Owen's point, though, I mean, I think you want the discussion to be able to help inform what goes on in the budget in terms of our for that year, and so, that's, I guess, the reason I made it earlier.
Anything else about, Chris, is there anything else you want us to discuss about format? You'd find a location?
So, concur, I, there's... Love about the depot, but noise, sound was definitely a problem, so we'll get a better location for sound. I will find a facilitator. Work on a facilitator?
Sorry, the baggage room at the depot is actually, acoustics are fine, it's all the hard surfaces and the ticket space there.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think there are other options, we'll find another option on location, we'll cover those two dates, we'll, like, my first, my easy one is to go to the facilitator we used a year ago, and check her calendar and see if she's available, I thought she did a nice job for us. And we will, you've confirmed for me what we were thinking, which is really, there's two elephants, or two massive issues to deal with, let's really zero in on those, and...
I mean, I understand staff resources, right, but I think most of department directors are important to most of those conversations. I would hesitate to not have some time with at least the full team. I thought that was beneficial for relationship building, but also for their substantive expertise.
I agree, I know I'm going to be missing some on 24th, 25th, whereas if, no, of February, if I get all the way out into March, that calendar is, I'm sorry. Yeah.
When is the, when is the SEP Ted training?
SEP Ted training is...
That's fully into May, right? Because I think we have quite a bit of staff at that.
Yep.
It's May 22nd to 26th, at least that's what I have in my calendar.
The great room at Rocky, if available, also makes for a nice location.
Yeah, we approached them last year, we also approached the, so we will find a space where sound, what sound was, was the critique issue problem. Love the atmosphere there, but sound was definitely hard.
Okay.
We'll get a location, we'll look at both the February 24, 25, March 31, 1. I agree, I'd like as many of you and them as possible, so I'll report back, and we'll lock in, I would say, you know, next week, we'll confirm the date, and we'll look at some locations, too. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else on that topic?
The food was really good, I thought, last time. I don't, I can't remember who you used, but...
I think it was, wasn't it? Yeah, I think it was.
Lots of good caterers around Billings, so...
Abby's catering, I think, maybe, but I'm just guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any public comment? Nope, so we'll close that item. Ready to move on to something else, Chris, before we go to item number four?
At some point, just to give you a little bit of an admin update, I'm glad we saved it for the end, but with legislative session, all the things going on, whenever it's appropriate, I'll kind of fill in some stuff.
Okay. Anything in the way of highlights, upcoming agenda items? We talked a little bit about, oh, shoot, well, we've already covered several upcoming items tonight.
Next week, you've got the land use issue of zoning related to the Blue Creek area. That, I think, is your kind of hottest subject that's on the agenda.
Was that, yeah, excuse me about that? Councilmember Neese?
Yeah, regarding that, was that, there's a question whether or not that, whether that protest was valid for a year, I believe? Did that ever get answered? Whether or not it couldn't, could not be brought back? I didn't see it responded back. I missed that? Okay. So, you said it's okay? All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, take a look at that. Any other questions about upcoming items before we declare item number four done? Don't see any, so, no public comment, no yellow hand with Councilmember Tinswell, so we'll move to general council discussion. Council Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. The legislative committee, of course, has been very busy with a lot of different bills and things coming up, and of course, we're meeting twice a month, which is really not enough during this session, because before we can bring any item to the council or respond to the administration, we have to bring it to council first, we have to have a meeting on it first, so I think that there's some logistics problem that we're learning through that we may have to change our rules a little bit for during sessions. But, a couple of bills that are, that have been questioned, and Chris, I may lean on you, because there was two that came from the city administrator, asking, what do we think of these bills? And to let you know that we, I think we don't give up our personal opinion of those bills as far as what we think, but as a committee, we can't comment on those or direct the administration whether to or to support or not to support them. So, I think one came out of Bozeman, they were asking for our support, and the other one came out of, I can't remember where the other one was. There was two that you were asking about.
The Bozeman bill was specifically allowing that elections in special districts be allowed to take place during the general election, and part of the craziness, and actually, I really appreciate Councilmember Purington's acknowledgement of the reality, right? Once the session takes off, and my focus has really been a lot more about tonight and other things, it's been absolutely hard to keep up, and we'll get our feet underneath of it. But specific to that was just, there must be something in statute that says you can't have those district elections on general elections. I put it out to you guys, they asked us if we would support it, actually, I heard reported back that it got very good traction in the hearing. Frankly, I think politically, there seems to be more and more pressure to limit elections outside of general election cycles, so I feel like that that was an easy one to put out, as well as frankly, to make a judgment call if time didn't exist, to say there's nothing inconsistent with city policy, to be supportive of something like that.
So, Chris, just to clarify, it just adds that as another option? It doesn't mandate it has to be in that?
Correct.
Okay. And I agree, I think, I think the research I did, I didn't never, I never did hear back from the bill sponsor, because I emailed them, but you're right, I think it just adds one more option for us to put out that, so, that's one thing, and then the other one had to do with, I'm sorry, I should have wrote those down, there was, it was addition, it had to do with taxes, but I don't remember what they, what the bill...
Oh, I think it was, it is the state, there are some legislators out of Kalispell, Bozeman, and a few other places to use a part of the bed tax.
Yes, the bed tax, right.
That the state collects. The controversial piece, I talked to the Chamber of Commerce, Daniel and I have had a few conversations where this was not in agreement with the hoteliers, is it would reduce funding for some of the promotional activities that take place. But, what came to us by law, if this law passed, mandated we use it, what we would collect from hotels inside the city limits, and the county would collect non-city limit hotels, has to be for tax relief. Again, this council's been very consistent over the years of a desire to try to find a way to shift the tax burden away from just property owners, so I asked, where were you guys at, and had conversations with the Chamber, League of Cities, and tried to get a feel for where others are. Yeah, generally, the hoteliers and the Hotel Association didn't like the bill. I emphasize, we weren't so steadfast in it to not be willing to talk about if this thing gets any traction, hey, there's a fair amount of that money, as I understand it, goes straight into the state's general fund. So, if the state is who was pivoting, because they have surpluses, and they were shortening their surplus, and instead giving us money for tax relief, and it wasn't going to hurt promotion, seems to me that would be an easy bill to support on both sides, but a lot of work to get between here and there. But that was the bill you...
Yeah, that was the other one, and I, personally, I think that the city should support that, because especially with where, if we're, if that money comes in, it goes into a pool, it has to then just reduce the taxes, or if we are seeing that we are, if this, we move forward with all this Parks plan that we're talking about, that would help reduce some of that tax burden. And so, I would, I would ask that the, and I know you guys haven't seen it, and maybe you want to see it first, but I would ask that we actually move in a position of support of that bill, so that you, it can make sure that we're not just, well, okay, we may or may not support, but actually support something like that, too, in order, in order to look at that. But again, that's something that, do you remember the House bill? We can, we can give that to the councils and talk about it later. And I'm sorry, I'm not making a motion now, I would like to, but I will not, because it hasn't been passed out to the other councils.
And we may have some questions about the bill, I for one, Chris, you said it wouldn't reduce tourism promotion, but isn't that the whole point? Very famously, Colorado, a few years ago, said, hey, we got too many people here, we don't want to promote the state, and they stopped putting money into promotion, and just the tourism numbers went through the floor, so there's a really clear correlation, we'd hate to, I assume we don't want that to happen here.
So, may or my apologies. So, the, as I understand the draft bill, it would reduce some of what the state Department of Commerce uses and distributes out for promotion. My comment was, if it gets some traction, and we're negotiating in the hallways, and we're trying to figure out where might this settle out, a great position to be that might gain the hotelier's support is not reducing promotion dollars, but instead reducing dollars that go to the state for non-promotion, because maybe I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that's part of the bed tax, the state collects, does just, it was put in place two times over my 20 years, when they had budget shortfalls, that they added to it to fill their budget gap. So, if now with a surplus, we could accomplish both things, then I would think we would be on, we would be on the same page with each other. We don't get to have that conversation if the bill doesn't get any traction.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, or, Councilmember Joy, Councilmember Purington?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Isn't there a document that needs to go along with bills that... Isn't there a document that needs to go along with bills that delineates the financial impact of the bill? So if you're talking about, if the bill gains traction, then obviously we have to position ourselves based on the fact that it could pass because it has sufficient support. But are we actually talking about enough, enough money to have taxpayers relief? I mean, I'm thinking our state budget's pretty big. The structure of our, our tax system is what we need to be talking about and not whether or not a small amount would be taxpayer relief. So I guess, I guess if I were, if it were going to gain traction and the city wanted to have a position on it, I'd like to know what the financial impact would be because it sounds very, it could sound very great. You're getting taxpayer relief, but if the amount, the fiscal impact is very miniscule, we're shooting ourselves in the foot by, um... So anyway, that would be my point. If it's fiscally, you know, if it has some real fiscal impact, then you would have to look at it. But if it's not a lot of money, it, it, it can make really great soundbites. That's my, my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purington.
Okay, so this is kind of the issue that, that I always come back to is, and I mentioned it briefly, our lobbyists are also lobbyists for the Montana Tourism Association. They're going to oppose it. So it's, they can't, and Jennifer knows a little bit more about lobbying than I do, so she might want to, you know, join in here. But I see it as a real conflict of interest when we hire lobbyists and they are hired by other entities. The difference is, taxpayer money hires our lobbyists. We have a lot wider base than what the Montana Tourism is. I just see an issue with that. And, you know, so now it's my understanding that they are going to go out and find another lobbyist for us if we want to, if as a whole, we want to say we support this. So I don't understand the dynamics of what your contract is with them. I know we pay them good money, but I suppose the tourism business does too. But I just think we have such a wider base. Why did they pick the tourism business over the city billings?
So as I understand, the conversation isn't picking the tourist business over the city. It's the reality that they have two, two clients who are in disagree, who have differing, opposite positions on a bill. So ethically, it was brought to my attention, I didn't have to find it, that Amy asked immediately, this is a conflict. Are, are you willing to waive the conflict? How do we technically deal with it? Yeah, one of our lobbyists doesn't sit there and get up twice and, and speak on two different bills. We actually have two people working for us. Or do one of us, or the League of Cities, stand up and say, on behalf of all these cities, including billings, we're supporting this bill. So I think, you know, we're talking about a couple of different things. From a practical standpoint, there's a way to deal with these issues. We, we don't run into them a lot. I, I would say, we don't, we don't have the resources to pay a lobbyist to only represent us and Helena and only us, at least based on what the, the fee structures are. So we run into this from time to time. And frankly, what, what I've seen in the work from Crowley Flack and the relationships, their other, some of their other clients, I think have helped us understand the lay of the land politically and what would, how things would work. So I think it works as much to our advantage that we have a firm working for us that has that, other clients and that level of understanding. And from time to time, when we run into this, we have workarounds. You may totally disagree and want us to do it differently, but that's, that's how this specific issue and, and the few times that they come up during, during the session. And they really are far and few between because once they do, there are some cities that have been dropped. And there was one other city that they served. They found themselves in conflict with their clients often. And so they no longer cert, then they got to pick, which are they going to serve? Because they also don't want to be in this position.
Yeah, I think we've had that issue with every lobbyist at some point. If they represent others, it can happen. Counsel, uh, any other comment though on this and be great to distribute the, the bill. I certainly think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Counselor, ever? The only, and I just want to bring up another bill that I think is moving through, is HB 35. And you may have seen some notes on that. That's the one bill that is going to remove the city and county appointees or change them to ex officio. And if, if we did appoint them, the city would still pay them. So that's something I think that we, we want to, I, in my opinion, and, and we can talk about that too, but I think we do want city representatives. I would assume the county does as well, at least believe I, I've heard that. But as far as the city goes, I think we should, um, support having voting members, not, uh, no, I don't mind that the city would pay for those voting members. So whether they reimburse the county or however that works. But as far as, um, having ex officio members, there really is not a whole lot of benefit to have an ex officio member appointed to one of those boards. Any staff member, any, any person can go and attend those meetings and report back. So I, I don't know if you guys have been following that HB 35 bill. I know Pam, you have.
Further comments? Counselor Purington, do you want to comment? Or Counselor Shaw?
Well, I just think it's important that we do continue to follow it. It's on the third reading in the House, it'll pass the House. That, um, Bill Mercer and even Larry Brewster, Brewster is the one that's a supporter, is the sponsor of that bill, is that, that there is some thought that they can stop it in the Senate or change it, amend it in the Senate before it goes to the full body. So I think we need to work with that. We need to work with Senator Frydell because he's on local government. Just haven't moved that much more on it. And, um, you know, the other thing that we're even looking at is some, to dissolve the, the Heights Water District. And if we do that, there needs to be support from the city in order to do that. So I think we need to have a conversation, maybe with the, the two Heights representatives, Ward Two, because I think they carry most of the Heights Water District. And just see what we can go with it. Because we have sponsors for that if they want to, if we want to carry it, but it would have to be with support from the full council to do that.
But, but there's no such bill in the, it's been introduced at this point, right?
No, no, that was, that would be, and we have to do it fairly quickly because they have to get it in before transmittal.
And presumably, that would only apply to areas within an incorporated city?
And it would, well, they're just, they're still drafting materials for it, that it would apply specifically to billings really. And they think that they can get that to pass.
So the district would continue, we're not affecting the, uh, even, even outside the city of, so who would provide water outside the city limits?
City.
The city would.
Yeah. So there's, there's some dynamics in that because you can't cut off the county users. So you'd have to, yeah. And, um, yeah. And so it would be a matter of, of how do we propose that? So that even Brewster said that he would carry it. So, and that's part of his district. So he's just going, you know, he wants to protect the county residents, water users there. And it has to be fair. And it's not one of those things that we're going to, you know, force them into annexation. It's none of that. It's just so that, um, those ratepayers up in the Heights actually have some solid representation with their water rights.
Okay. That makes some comments that Commissioner Rossland made to me make a lot more sense. I wasn't exactly following where he was going today, but he seemed to be in support of this concept, so, okay. Counselor Shaw?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, process wise, I find this conversation not very helpful or productive. I think this should be in the Legislative Committee. I would rather that we meet more often to have that conversation there, then come to council, here's the bill so we can read it. I think as we're talking about bills that we can't see, that people haven't been updated on, I just, I don't think that this is the forum for this discussion.
You know, one of the things that I think that Roy and I said, with those meetings only being an hour long, it's really hard to get through these. And we've rushed through them, I think, a lot of that on Legislative Committee. The Legislative Committee, it's, it's a good concept, but there are some things that we need to change on that. And, and just like, you know, Chris, you know, whenever you're saying that, well, someone comes to you, the lobbyists come to you and said, oh, you're going to support it, then all of a sudden, it's your decision whether or not to support it, if we're not meeting or, you know, and it just makes it really difficult and it puts a lot on your shoulders.
So I'll just remind the council, and, and we were late, unfortunately, having you approve it. So on your agenda in six days is the resolution. It won't solve every one of these questions, but it solves about 90% of them. So as an example, item four on our resolution says, shift the tax burden. Support legislation shifting the tax burden from billings, property owners to users of government services where appropriate. Judgment calls have to be made by Andy and I and you in those finance areas. Sometimes you get noticed or you're asked hours before, minutes. Other times, you got time to work it through with the committee. So, yeah, the idea wasn't to just start spitballing bill by bill, but I did want to let you know, they're going at record pace right now. The committee, I think, is helpful to have five more people who are directly engaged in helping us. It's just too much to keep track of. And ultimately, the resolution provides us guidelines. It won't solve everything, but it really does help. And it's what the consultant, the lobbyist, your staff, and you, whenever you're speaking on behalf of the council, use versus when you're speaking on behalf of yourself.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Certainly encourage Legislative Committee to, uh, copy other councilmembers on emails involved in the discussion as much as possible, distribute bills. Is that sufficient? Anything else in this category before we ask for public comment on our agenda items? Counselor, Rowan?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to talk real briefly about an initiative. I emailed it out to all of you. I would appreciate comments, questions, feedback, as you've had a time to review. I would like to propose that as we plan to expand Billings Municipal Court and move it into a new facility, that we do so with the same type of evidence that we had for the CPSM evaluations to do police fire and other operations. There is an entity, the National Center for State Courts, that does this sort of municipal court evaluation and would help us plan and resource a new court and can also take a look at the facility plans and ensure that we're thinking about the best ways to do remote hearings and all those kinds of things that we have to do to help our, our council. You know, council has a statutory duty. I didn't realize that. We actually have a statutory duty to provide resources that are adequate for court operations. I think this will give us some data and information so that we can start budgeting now. We've talked a lot about wanting to have good candidates for the second position. I think a show to the public that we're trying to be very thoughtful and informed and making sure this expansion is successful will help do that. So this is a proposal to do just that. It's been sent to Judge Kohler. She's very receptive. The, I think the cost would split over two fiscal years, so we might use a little unspent funds this year and then the remainder into fiscal year 2024. But I believe we could have recommendations from this entity by the end of November, December-ish. So we would at least kind of have some thoughts for when that new judge is elected. I don't think we'll be in Stillwater by that time, or, I'm sorry, the Billings Government Center by that time. But I mean, at least, at least we get some third party information and help us to assess how we think about staffing and workflow and resources and all those kinds of things that I think we need to prepare for. So that's what I've circulated to all of you. And I don't know, Chris or Gina, if you have thoughts on this that you want to share with council, but that's what I would love to hear from you all, not necessarily tonight, but over the next few days, weeks.
Did you guys want to comment on that?
Just say thank you. I mean, as, as Counselor Rowan and I talked about, from time to time, have Googled around searching for things to help in this area, as well as the jail, which is in ours and some other things. And have really, sorry, struggled to find something. So if we've got a credible resource that can be that independent, third-party review, I believe firmly, it greatly assisted us with the CPSM report, both for our internal staff accountability and, and accountability or credibility with the electorate, that we were not afraid to have someone come in and critique our operations. So all in and, and supporting the concept.
Okay. Counselor, Gillick?
Just, uh, thank you for bringing this forward. I, I think it's a great idea. I know at our last session, when we were discussing, um, bringing the second judge and compensation, like I'm completely unprepared to be able to give anything, uh, to offer anything to, to that discussion. So I, I would really benefit from that and, and, but I think maybe to Chris's point, the lecture would feel good too. In terms of where the money would come from, did you have thoughts in terms of where the source would be? Is that, are court fees that aren't being paid or anything particularly?
I, I don't know. I, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to jump the gun.
No, go ahead, please.
I know that's something that's being worked on. I think that finding $35,000 for this year won't be hard. And then I think we can plan for the remainder of it in fiscal year 24. I think we should get started sooner rather than later. So I spoke with Chris and I think he felt confident that we could find at least the first half of what might be. And this is the top end, so we could narrow the scope down and, and make it smaller. I think comp, the comparison you gave me, Chris, was CPSM was about $165,000, did you say, ish? Yeah. So I thi, I think this is a pretty reasonable amount and at least Chris seemed confident that we could find the money to get started and then budget for it for the next year.
Counselor Joy, Counselor Boyet, Counselor Purington, Joy?
Well, I just wondered, will the county, could the county weigh in on this as well?
I, I don't know the answer to that. So what I know is that this entity has the capacity to do a municipal court analysis, a district court analysis, or a full system. So how all the courts interact and work together. And this type of analysis, even for the municipal level, would include a look at prosecution as well. So their capacity to do it exists. I've sent this to County Attorney Twido because I had heard that maybe there was an interest. I don't know where the commissioners are. We could do a phase one that starts with municipal court and then a systems, if there were consensus among the governing authorities, do a phase two. So I think there's options, but I don't know the county's position.
Correct. Counselor Joy Boyet, Tricky?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I guess I have a question for the city attorney. If the recommendations, can the council or the city administrator impose changes on the municipal court in the sense that if Judge Kohler is an elected official and the head of the court, can the city council or the city administration impose changes on the running of the municipal court? Thank you.
Counselor Member Joy, I, no, I mean, the, the council can't require another elected official to, to implement any processes. She can run her court how she deems that she wants to. However, that's why it's important that she has buy-in. I think she's, like Counselor Member Owen said, she's enthusiastic and she's receptive to this. So I think it, because of that, I think it will be, she will be receptive to implementing things. But I think the intent is really to just, more so just plan for the second courtroom to, so council can be more prepared in budgeting and, and planning for the facilities and staffing and all those kinds of things. So I think even if Judge Kohler weren't receptive to it, I still think it would be useful for council.
Thank you. Counselor Boyet, Tricky?
Thank you, Mayor. During my banking career, I got to move to different banks and, and I would say, why are you doing, what are you doing? And they said, well, we've always done it this way. And soon we found out why and it was a mess. Especially this uncollected two, a couple hundred thousand dollars. There's got to be better ways. I think every business should look at themselves on a regular basis. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? And what can we do better? This is a perfect time to do this because we are getting another judge. And, and what's staffing? What's going on? I think this is a perfect time to do it. And $35,000 to $40,000, to me, is, that's insignificant for, for what we're going to do over time.
Thank you. Counselor Tricky?
I had a conversation with two of the judges over there about a year, year and a half ago about, who knows, doing something like this. What?
District court?
Yeah, yeah. The Montana District Court, not the federal. And they were both very receptive to the idea and had a long list of administrative complaints about, about things that are going on over there. So. So, that's where I would go. I would, I forget who's the, I forget who's the administrative head over there right now. I forget what they call it. But there's a rotating, you know, select, what we were talking about here, that...
Or the judge.
Head judge.
Then the judge, chief judge.
Chief judge, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know either.
Okay.
That's where I would go.
All right. Let's, anything else on this topic before we move off, move on?
Just real quick, Gina, I just want to ask, because I know that we have, we can't, we, we as a body can't tell the judge, judge how to run their court. But we do have control over staffing, and I don't know if we have control over scheduling, but if, when you, now that you're going to move from a one-judge system to a two-judge system, there has to be coordination that I would think that we would have the ability to staff some type of coordination, would actually run that process. And then Chris, as the administrator, would really administrate those employees. He doesn't administrate the judges, but he does administer to those employees. Is that, do I understand that correctly? So we could set up, or Chris could set up a structure of, of administration of the courts, it's just the judges are sitting on the benches and running the courts?
Well, I think that, when you say administration of the courts, I, I think that gets really sticky. It's, it is true that all the employees of the court are city employees, but Judge Kohler really is instrumental in determining their schedules and their duties, and, because she's the one in the best position to know what needs to be done. And frankly, the administration, the city administration is not in a position to do that, and would be ill-equipped to administer a municipal court without the assistance of Judge Kohler, or whatever elected judge it would be.
Okay. And I think this report would help, maybe it would help us understand a little bit more the role that the city can be involved in, if there is an ability to do that. So I, I look forward to something like this, so that we, we can actually help change the process. And again, if Judge Kohler's in favor of it, I, I don't see reason why she would not want to do some of those checklists, just like the police and the fire went through that checklist to make sure, and made their system more efficient.
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. Let's wrap up. I'll just conclude with a mention that, for anybody who wasn't at the governor's roundtable on public safety last week, it was interesting, I wouldn't say it was earth-shattering, that you've got 15 people around the table for 45 minutes. The governor had certain things he wanted to focus on, particular human trafficking was the theme. I was able to report that our massage ordinance has been very effective on that front, so that was good. I also was able to put in a pitch for Senator Usher's send, Bill 94, the sober living registration certification bill that we've now been reading about in the front page of the Billings Gazette. We've had more attention on sober living homes in the last week than we've had in, you know, five years before that. So I think that's good. Got some pushback in Helena, but I think people are starting to understand the need for it, and so that's good. I also put in a pitch for Kerry Seekins Crowe's bill requiring the state to reimburse the county for actual costs of housing state inmates in the Co-County Jail. Didn't hear any pushback in that group, you know, I think everybody supported that. So it's probably good for the governor to hear that, presumably he would sign it if it makes it through the legislature. The other thing I did, not in public, but in a private conversation with the governor, was to raise a more fundamental question, which I raised for us, which is, typically when we have a big problem, you develop a plan, and you, then you work the plan. And you build a building, and you have a plan, you have a rec center, you develop the plan. We've got a huge public safety problem, but we don't have a plan, because it's so complicated, it's so amorphous. It involves so many organizations and jurisdictions beyond the city. We, and it's hard to justify money coming out of the police department, you know, hey, we're not going to hire another officer because we want to put it into a plan. So I say, you're sitting on $2.2 billion of surplus that would be great for a one-time use. Well, and locally, the way I see it, is there could be no better one-time use than a cross-jurisdictional plan about addressing public safety issues, in particular crime, similar to what the Operation Safe Streets was doing a couple of years ago, when Kurt Almy left his position. I had a conversation with him, saying, hey, can the city come up with money to hire you to help lead the development of some sort of written plan that would involve discussion of the various jurisdictions? I still think it's a good idea. I still think it'd be worth putting some of our public safety mill levy or marijuana money toward that kind of effort. Ideally, there would be buy-in from the state and the county, blah, blah, blah. So I just mentioned that, in case anybody strikes the lottery, this $1.2 billion, did that already get award? Did somebody already win that $1.2 billion? Okay, well, shoot. But that's still a need that's out there. I saw Councilor Joy's hand. Councilor Boyet will try to wrap up.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the National League of Cities email, email newsletter that we get, mentioned some of the work that they're doing on, it's called, I think it's called Reimagining Public Safety, is the title. And the mayor of Missoula is on that with the National League. So maybe we've got some people working on this, even though it named the mayor that passed away. We may have some people in the state who are actually working on this, so that might be a resource. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Boyet?
Also at that meeting with the governor, I think the sheriff, Mike Linder, got in his two cents that he has 40 prisoners in a, in a local jail here that belong in, in Deer Lodge, and he'd kind of said, can you move them?
Yeah. Councilor Princket?
Just one thing. Chris, can you address the fire marshal policy?
Yep. So you, what you're referencing is a letter we received representing family promise. So we, our internal team, so our city attorney's office, in coordination with the fire marshal, as well as chief building official, will respond to that legal letter. That letter was not a response to a letter they received from us. It was a response to conversations and an email where the fire marshal's office, long story short, was, was, has been asked by parishioners, as well as other users, is it okay to have families staying in the basement of our church? So we've not changed a policy. There's no policy change here. It's implementing fire code and the building code, and just working through, making sure that we're airtight on the legal side of this, as to precisely, how can we help them either accomplish what they want to accomplish, which is provide families with a safe place to stay, but be in compliance with the fire code and the building code, because nobody wants to have a tragedy take place. So we will be responding, we're working through that collectively together, as well as trying to offer up, what are some of the key things, like what we learned in, in our efforts with our church next door. Frankly, if, if the church happens to have, and it may, many do, have sprinklers, because they're commercial buildings, have alarm systems, because they're commercial buildings, have notification systems, because they're commercial buildings, and have exits that meet the code, they can do things like this, but not all spaces inside those churches or all churches were built to that. So we're working through all those things to help them, and help us be clear, we don't have a choice but to comply. The fire marshal has to enforce the code, can't go beyond that, but he does need to enforce the code.
Councilor Boyet, you had a follow-up?
That wasn't really the issue, I thought. I mean, a family promise, we've, we've had people at the churches for years, we feed them. I guess the question is, what, what happened now? What changed the rules? They've been doing this for years, and all of a sudden, they said, no. I think that was the real question. Why are you doing it now, and what, what rule changed? Are you, you know, what, that was really the issue.
And Councilor Tricky will want to answer that question, but, you had it, Councilor Tricky, and Chris, you can chime in, but Councilor Tricky, you got an answer to that?
Yes. I heard it from the horse's mouth. A parishioner called the fire marshal to say, can you believe what these people are, the conditions that they're living in? And the fire marshal said, you've got people sleeping in their churches? They had no idea. The fire marshal had no idea that that was going on. So the situation was brought to their attention, and they, they've done what they've had to do. Yeah.
Okay. Chris, can you beat that?
Can't beat that. The goal, what I want to express is, our, our team very much, we, this is a good program that's offered. We want to make sure it's safe, we want to make sure it's in compliance with the code, and we want to work with the churches to get in compliance, whoever those are, who, who are, there's a difference between using a, a commercial building in various capacities when having people sleep through the night. So we're working through those details. You will, we will communicate with you. You'll see the letter that responds to their, to their letter to us.
Thank you. Councilor Nice, before I adjourn?
Yeah. Just real quick, Chris, just on that, was, there's no, no ability for leniency. It sounds like you said they have to follow the law. The, the letter of cease and desist is in place, and there's no exception. If, if that's the case, I...
So no letter from us said cease and desist?
Okay. Then, then we were misinformed. Just, on a separate issue then, is, you used to bring to us the report of the crime, and who's being released, and that, and I don't think that's been coming. Can you bring, make sure that comes next, next week, or next when we meet?
Sure. We, I think you're talking about the, we've got the annual numbers we used with, when the governor was in town last week, wrapping up 2022.
Yeah. I think that's helpful to keep that in the public's mind every time we meet. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.